This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise Vs and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. Whoops, good evening. It is December 13th, 2021, and I am not going to call the council meeting to order yet because we do not have a quorum of the seated council. But we do have all six of our new counselors that will be joining us on January 3rd, 2022. And we have a couple people in the audience, not many, but I promise you, for those in the audience, you'll find this interesting as well. So I'm going to just start by saying we do have an orientation packet. We've sent you an extensive list of resources that has also now been added to the packet. And my apologies upfront if some of those links don't get you to the right place. I tried to make sure that you got the full URL. So let me just start by talking about our goals for the evening. And Athena, would you put those up on the screen? Thank you. And we'll go to the next slide. So our goals for the evening, as you can see them up here, will be joined momentarily by our town attorney. We're going to talk about, and in fact, we're going to take mostly questions about the charter and other laws that governors, review communications, talk about the role of the president, vice president, and council committees, and then make sure that we have plenty of time along the way for you to ask questions, not just at the very end. I also wanted to say, please think of tonight as a first orientation. I know each of you have been setting up meetings with the town manager. But in addition to this, I know, I'm sure you will have questions afterwards. And once we are sworn in and begin our next term, we can always set up another orientation time as well. Paul, is Lauren here?
She is.
Okay. Then let me just go ahead and introduce Lauren Goldberg. She is our town attorney. She joined KP Law Firm after serving as legal counsel to the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth Elections Division. So with that, we're going to take down the screens and let you see Lauren. Go ahead, Lauren.
Hello, everyone, and congratulations and thank you to the president for having me here today. I wanted to talk with you a little bit about the most important laws that you will have to deal with in this context. And that involves, and they were up on the screen a minute ago, the open meeting law, the public records law, the public records law, and the conflict of interest law. So first, be aware that, I just am trying to be able to see all the faces, there we go. All of these laws are intended for the public's business to be accessible to the public, whether because it's going to be discussed in public or the record's going to be made public and/or you have the, you know, the town's goals instead of your personal goals at heart. I'm just going to do basically the takeaways, what I think you really need to know right away. And so that, the first one is, under the open meeting law, you can only meet, a quorum can only meet if there's been 48 business hours notice prior to the meeting. And right now, normally I would say it has to be in an accessible location, and right now that accessible location is in fact, the internet as well. A quorum can only discuss business of the group within a posted meeting. So there are easy ways that the open meeting law is violated. For example, one member of the council sends an email to all the other members of the council saying, I, this is what I think, feel, suspect, I'm happy about, I'm mad about, et cetera. Any sharing of feelings, ideas, concerns, et cetera, about anything that the council does would be a violation if you were to send an email about your feelings. If you were to send it just to a couple of people, and that couple of people pass it on to another couple of people, et cetera, et cetera, you can have a serial violation of the open meeting law. And that can happen with an email or with a telephone call. It can also just happen with conversation. You know, if one person, if, if the president speaks to one person and one person speaks to the next, and one person speaks to the next, next thing you know, you have a quorum and it's a violation of the open meeting law. So better to plan ahead, better to err on the side of conducting business in formal meetings. Remember that there are also the ability to, there is also the ability to violate the open meeting law on social media. So don't weigh in on something if it's pending before the body, stay out of it on social media to the extent that you're able. And, you know, especially if you've seen some of your colleagues already weigh in, you might want to say something like, we will be discussing this in substance on Tuesday, please join us, something like that. Importantly, any subcommittee of the council is also subject to the open meeting law. And a subcommittee is essentially two or more people who are tasked by the council to do something. So if two people are working together on something, and that's because the council has voted or the president has asked two people to work together, that's a subcommittee, and it would be subject to the open meeting law, meaning you have to post the notices, you have to keep minutes, just like the council does. Okay, so finally, you know, I mentioned email. In this world, email and social media are really the kinds of things that you want to avoid copying. You can't call out other members of the council, you can't tag them, you shouldn't include their names in your comments, you should avoid targeting them from, you know, in your, in your posts. So that is essentially the takeaways from the open meeting law. Only talk business when you're in a quorum. If you're going, when you have a quorum and you've posted and put at a meeting, if you're going to talk behind the scenes, you can talk to one other person, for example, without violating the law, but the, the risk that that could be passed along gets higher and higher the more people that are part of the conversation. So that's something I had to think about, just use email for things that are business related and not to go back and forth. Okay. Now, what goes hand in hand with the public, with the open meeting law is the public records law. And this, I never make any friends when I share this information. So I'm going to tell you now, and you'll hear me say it again. Any record made or received by a public official, including town counselors, is a public record upon the moment of its creation and subject to disclosure under the law, unless strictly and narrowly construed exemptions apply. The bottom line is, anything you create, whether you write it on a piece of paper, you type it into your computer, you use your town email address, use your private email address, you, you know, you email one counselor or another counselor, or you respond to, you know, on behalf of the council, let's say, to a question, all of that is a public record, subject to mandatory disclosure upon request. And the reason this is so important is that, under the public records law, essentially those records need to reside with the town. Okay? So if you do any emailing outside of your official town email address, which I don't recommend, you should copy it to yourself at your town address. Why do we care? Because when we get a public records request, we have just 10 business days to respond. And that may seem like a lot, but it actually goes by very quickly, especially if people have to search through their own computer files, et cetera. And worst case scenario is that the supervisor of public records every once in a while will order a forensic examination of a computer when someone says, oh gee, I deleted it. So deleting is not an option. Copy it to yourself at town, at your town email address, and try to use your town email address, which is a good way of making sure the records can be preserved. The, the record itself, whatever the format is, does not determine whether it's a public record. So regardless, if it's text, if it's a picture, if it's an email, if it's an actual letter from a snail mail, if it's, you know, something that someone dropped off for you in your box at town hall, whatever it is, anytime that, that, that record exists, when you've made or received a public record, that is determined by looking at the content. So whether it's subject to disclosure is a question, but it is most definitely a public record. Okay? So again, my normal advice on this is only write down what you're comfortable reading in a blog or post it online. If you wouldn't be comfortable seeing it online, don't write it down and don't say it. And perhaps most importantly is, and this may seem like a silly piece of advice, but I think it's a really good one. A colleague says it's the 24-hour rule. I call it the one-hour rule. Some have also called it the half-hour rule. I say go with an hour. And that is if you feel particularly passionate about something, either you're upset and you're going to write back to someone, or you're elated that they figured out where you were coming from, just give it a little while before you press send. Read it again, make sure you're comfortable seeing it out there, you can't take it back. So, you know, is that the attitude you want to convey? Or does it say what you said, what you want to say correctly? Is there a different way you could approach it? So that's very important. And then private notes are not public records. So individual counselor notes are not public records, provided that you don't share your notes with another. That is much less of a risk when everyone's in a different place, but especially if you're sitting at a table, you can't push your personal notes over to your, the person sitting next to you and say, do you agree with that? Because by doing that, you've now made your notes a public record, subject to mandatory disclosure. The only exception to this is for the person who's actually taking the minutes of the meeting. And I don't know how you guys do that, but if ever, whether you're in a subcommittee or a meeting of the full council, whoever takes the notes of the meeting, those are the minutes of the meeting until formal minutes are approved, and they're public records at the moment of their creation. Someone once asked me, but I write in shorthand, and I, you know, no one said you can't write in shorthand, but the minutes need to be approved later so that everyone can understand them. So that's really the open meeting law. Public's business happens at posted public meetings for which appropriate notice has been provided. Stay away from emails, stay away from weighing in on things on social media. Some counselors will actually create a new official counselor personality on the web. So, you know, maybe for Facebook, you create a new counselor blank page, and then you do your own private emailing with your friends about your stuff on the other page. And you make sure that you're not copying, you know, copying into both. You want to be careful to keep that, you know, public-facing page filled with public information, dates, times, places, any, you know, warnings, events that might happen, you know, meetings that are coming up, that kind of thing. Okay. And then finally, last but truly not least, is the conflict of interest law. This is a very complicated statute, as are all of these, even if they don't seem like it right now, but you will learn. The most important thing for the conflict of interest law is you cannot participate in anything that you have a financial interest in, or your immediate family member, or your employer, or an organization where you're on the board, or a trustee. And so you can't just sit at the table during a discussion if you have a financial interest in that. And it can be large or small, positive or negative. If you have a financial interest, you need to get up from the table and go sit in the audience. And, you know, how do we do that with a, a public meeting? Well, you could ask to be removed from the panel and be put in with the participants. That's a way to do that. It is very important that you don't sit at the table if you're worried that you might have a conflict. The actual conflict, as we noted, was, is created by money, a financial interest in what's happening before the council. There's also a prohibition against representing anyone other than the town in matters in which the town has a direct and substantial interest. What does that mean? It means that you can't appear on behalf of Little League or, you know, the 5K run-walk group or whatever, requesting permits, et cetera, filing applications. Someone else from your group needs to do that. You can't, if you're an architect, put a seal on something that you know is going to get filed with the town. And if you're a lawyer, you can't represent someone other than, you know, yourself in a, in a matter that's pending before the town. And that's anything with the town, not just things that involve the council. The basic rule is, if it doesn't feel right, that is a very useful red flag, pay attention to it. You cannot undo a violation of the conflict of interest law. So you want to be very careful to make sure that you do not have a conflict. If you have something that might look like a conflict, your best friend's husband, or your childhood best friend's mother, or your, you know, your, your wife's, you know, work friend, any of those things might suggest to someone that you might act or fail to act, not because of, you know, the best interests of the town, but because of this other relationship. So there is a disclosure form to do. You can also make the disclosure, which gets filed with the clerk. And you can also make the disclosure on the record at the meeting. Again, this is where there isn't a prohibited interest, but it doesn't look great. And, you know, you'll know best who those people are in a small town that we represent with a very high tourist, a very strong tourist industry. You know, a lot of the people there are in business with one another. So they're not necessarily going to have a financial interest in the matter before them, but that applicant who's standing before them might be their business partner in another enterprise. And so that's the kind of thing where it's not prohibited for you to participate, but you have to make a disclosure saying, I'm, I have this relationship and I'm still going to make these decisions based on what's best for the town. Again, for the conflict of interest law, it's not sitting at the table. That is the worst thing that you can do if you think you have a financial conflict, or if you have a conflict that feels wrong. And then finally, the other part of the conflict of interest law is about gifts and what gifts the, the members of the council, members of any, any town official can receive. And that is, it can be a gift of less than $50. It's not supposed to be for or because of any particular decision, et cetera. So the example I might give you is, you know, someone comes to the building department, the person at the counter is extraordinarily helpful, and someone sends them a gift certificate for $40 to their favorite breakfast, breakfast place. That's not for or because of, that's in appreciation of, and that's fine. However, and this is probably the most important part of this gift discussion, you cannot accept a ticket to something like, you know, an event, a gala, or a Red Sox game, or whatever. If the face value of the ticket is less than, you know, less than what you would actually pay to buy, to buy it. So that $25 standing room only ticket that you might be able to get on game day, maybe, for the Red Sox, you can't buy that for $25 or less. You can only buy that at that higher price because it's so coveted, right? So opening day, no tickets are worth their face value. So you couldn't accept a ticket that's more than $50. It looks like it's more. Same thing with, unless you have a speaking engagement, a formal speaking engagement, and you've been, you have, you know, been asked to come and speak on a particular topic as a speaker, then you can't go to a gala or an event that would cost more than $50. So again, if it's a coveted art opening or something, it's more than $50 to buy that ticket, even if the face value of the ticket is $40. So you need to bear that in mind. And you also have to make a disclosure about gifts that you get. Remember, this is not to prohibit you from receiving gifts from your family and friends. That's unrelated to this, but it does apply to gifts that are provided in your professional capacity. And with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to use the raise hand function if you have questions. And Lauren is and can be with us for about another 10, 15 minutes, maybe. Dorothy?
I remember being puzzled as a new counselor, and sometimes still puzzled, when offered, the town council members are invited free to some chamber events and other events. And I always felt, feel a little bit confused as to when it's okay and when it isn't okay. So I've basically just been a lemming, if you guys all go, I say okay. But I haven't really understood, because some of those might be worth more than $40 or $50, I don't know. So what is the rule? Because they're going to be faced with the same thing of being offered free stuff.
Madam President, through you.
Please.
Thank you. If the face value is more than $50, you can't accept a free lunch, or a free dinner, or a free pass to a free event. If it's less than $50 and generally available to others, then, then it would be okay, you could accept an invitation from the chamber, for example. If it's more than $50, you cannot accept any payment or any, any free, free ticket unless you are a featured speaker at the event. That's the short answer.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah. Just because we have a lot of counselors currently who've been through this issue, and we have new counselors who are going to be through this issue, I think in Amherst, it's worth at least touching base on the question of people who are either employees or have spouses or children who are employees of the University of Massachusetts, Samaras College, or Hampshire College on matters that pertain to those institutions. And I know you've given guidance to the prior council, but it might be helpful for you to do that again.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for that question, Madam President, through you. So essentially, the, the question of conflict of interest is what's at issue here? And what you need to try and analyze is whether, in the matter that's before the council, is there any financial interest for you, your employer, your immediate family member, your board or trust where you're on the Board of Directors? All of those things create a conflict of interest that's a prohibited conflict for, if it's financial in nature. And again, that's, that's large or small, positive or negative. So what I would suggest is that, if you know something is going to come before you that involves, you know, one of the colleges in the area, you might kind of self-reflect and say, okay, do I have any issues there? Do I, am I employed there, this, that? And try to figure out, is there any financial interest? It has to be reasonably foreseeable and not just speculative. But you can always ask ahead of time about whether you think there's a conflict. And it's, if you call the Ethics Commission for an opinion, which you can do, you need to remember that you have to tell them everything, because they can't give you the right advice unless they know everything you've said, that you're, all of the circumstances. And also, you never want to call them after the fact, because essentially it's reporting yourself to the Ethics Commission. With that being said, there are times that that's a good choice, and, and you know, it's appropriate to talk about it then. But short answer is, if your employer has a financial interest in a particular matter that's pending before you, or, you know, an immediate family member, you cannot participate.
Pam Rooney?
Changing subjects a little bit, back to the first one, the open meeting law. Could you just talk a little bit more about the circumstances where someone might want to post on a, I don't know, monthly update? Or put something out as a newsletter kind of a thing? When you're trying to communicate your position on something, you know, if you ran on a platform of X and you're trying to explain to people why your position is something, does that, does that violate open meeting law when you are spreading your word and your message to potentially your, your fellow counselors?
So, Madam President, through you again. Thank you. So there's no one answer to this issue. I think it's something you need to be thoughtful about if you're going to send it about to everyone. Because yes, if it's your feelings, ideas, beliefs, and concerns, and it reaches every single one of the town counselors, then that could be an issue. What I, I do think people have found useful is to convert their campaign website, if you have one, or webpage, into like an information on the topic webpage. And so, you know, you could say something like, as everybody knows, I ran on this platform for more information about X, Y, or Z, please read the articles posted on my campaign page, something like that. If you're talking about how you feel and why you might vote in a particular way, I know that's something that, there's a lot of deliberation in Amherst that's not performed in other places. And that especially is one of those things. People kind of come to the table, they talk about it there, they take a vote. And I know you all do a lot of work before the actual vote to kind of lay a foundation. And my, my suggestion again is, it's potentially a due process issue if the council is acting in a semi-quasi-adjudicatory posture. So if you're deciding on someone's rights under zoning, or under licensing, or something like that, I would not suggest saying a thing in anything public. You should talk about it at the meeting, because that's where the people who, you know, who want to know should be, should be going for their information. In terms of, if you wanted to do kind of an update, you know, affordable housing numbers are XYZ, we repaved three roads, we formed a subcommittee that was very important to me on blah, blah, blah. You can do that, because it's a recitation of facts, basically, and not your feelings, ideas, beliefs, and concerns about a particular matter. So you do want to be careful about that. And there's a difference, and I know everyone's heard this before, there's a difference between running for office and being elected and then holding that office in terms of what you can and can't do. And, and part of that is trying to make sure that, and again, this is the way that I usually discuss it, is that the public's business should take place in front of the public. And so if you want to get together with a quorum to talk about something, or if you think there's a good reason for a subcommittee, that's something to bring to the, to the council president and to, you know, talk about what might, might make sense for that purpose.
Okay. Are there other questions of Lauren? Kathy?
Lauren, if, if we're not at the point of voting on something, but the vote is coming soon, you know, so it is a vote. And you have done some analysis of an issue that you put in writing. Can you come to the meeting, summarize in the three minutes that's allotted to you for comment, what's in your written analysis? And then is there a way that that could be posted for people to read after the meeting? Or would it have to be the whole written piece, say it's more than a paragraph? Would the whole thing have to be read during the meeting out loud?
Well, you know, every circumstance is different. And I should have started this off by saying, we're talking about best practices. We're talking about, you know, kind of thinking of starting off in the correct posture. There are some things that are defensible that you can make arguments about later, but that's not what we're here to talk about. In terms of a written statement, essentially, if, if the council is acting as the jury or the judge, then having a written statement of opinion ahead of time could create that due process problem that I was talking about. Because it could create the impression that you might vote or not vote a particular way because of things that aren't before the council. If you do have, you know, if, if you feel like it's something where there's information that would be useful to the council, you know, that can be forwarded to, to, I think, that goes to Athena and the president, is that correct? And then they can make sure that it wouldn't violate the open meeting law by sending it around. The other thing is, you could use your candidate The other thing is you could use your candidate page, if necessary, to to post something. But that doesn't solve the the due process issue. You know, probably best if you have a position to take at a meeting, you write down your five most important points or whatever it is, and you ask for the time to speak at the meeting. If you're going to go over the three minutes and you need more time, you know, I don't know how the the president handles that. But whatever the the council would normally do is what the council can do with those types of requests.
Shalini?
Yeah, this is, hi, everyone. I'm sorry I'm late. Question about conflict of interest. If we've worked with somebody in the past, but currently there is no financial interest, can we vote on an issue regarding that person?
The answer to that is likely yes. And the reason that I'm saying likely is because you've reported, right, as part of this question, that there's no financial interest currently. You know, that's kind of a personal a personal decision about whether to participate or whether to file that disclosure form and then announce at the beginning of the meeting. We used to be business partners. It was a long time ago. We have no financial relationship right now, although, you know, I kind of will deal with that person, you know, joking, I'm joking. But you could say that right on the record and then decide to participate. Or you could say, hey, look, this is my best friend and most important business partner. And even though I don't have a financial interest and we haven't had any financial dealings for a while, I don't want to put myself in a position of having to vote for or against this person or their project. And so I'm going to recuse myself. And recusal, as we said, is get up from the table if you're sitting at a table and walk around and sit in as a member of the public where you have the same rights as any other member of the public, but no more. Or or you could sit at the table and abstain. Abstaining means you participated, but you're you're not going to vote. Probably in this the second scenario that I just described, you'd prefer to recuse yourself. If you feel like voting against that person or talking about that person's project will reflect negatively on your relationship or not be solely focused on the best interests of the town. So you, as the individual, own the potential conflict. And if even if you're, you don't think you have one and other people think you do, no one can force you not to participate. But it is usually a red flag and you might want to think a little bit more about why people would be concerned about that. Again, ask first, do not act first, ask first.
I have to ask you to pause, Lauren. Lynn, please call the meeting to order.
We do?
We have seven. Mandy just joined us.
Okay. I actually, I have to suggest that before I do that, that we're finished with Lauren and she can come back at some point. So seeing that we have a quorum of the council, I'm going to call the meeting on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one to order at six oh four. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. I'm going to now actually make sure that not only all the counselors, but all of the council elects can hear us and we can hear them. Shalini Baumelton?
I'm here.
Pat DeAngelis?
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanniki?
Present.
Dorothy Pam?
Present.
Kathy Shane?
Here.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Okay, and now I'm going to start with Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Anna, present.
Anna, thank you. Anika Lopes?
Here.
Michelle Miller?
Here.
Pam Rooney?
Here.
Jennifer Taub?
Here.
And Alicia Walker?
Here.
Thank you. I we need to keep moving, but I also want to say that Lauren has offered to come back at any time should we have additional questions and want more information on any of these three issues as well as other opinions that she and other lawyers at KP Law often render for us when we have a question before the council. Okay, with that, I'm going to go on to Athena for the Town of Amherst local laws and rules that govern us.
Thank you, Lynn. My name is Athena O'Keefe. I'm the clerk for the town council. I've been the clerk for the town council since July of two thousand nineteen. It's been a real honor to serve the this very first town council. And I'm really looking forward to getting to know all of you and serving during your terms. I'm going to talk very briefly about the local laws and rules that govern govern us. In a moment, we'll talk about council responsibilities under the charter and where to find some of these documents online. What I'd like to mention right now is my role in terms of these documents. And what I'd like to say is just that I'm a neutral party in the council's business. My role is to advise and make sure that the council follows mass general law, the charter, the council rules. And it really isn't about my personal opinion. I leave all that at home. So it's helpful when counselors reach out ahead of time if they have motions or they want to make an amendment so that I can enter those into the record of votes and I have the words exactly as you'd like them. If you need advice about how to make a motion or make an amendment or what's appropriate, then I can help with that. And and I can put it on screen during the meeting. So it's helpful to have that in advance. And that's that's where I fall in those things. I'm going to move to the next section unless there are any questions.
Are there questions about the charter, the rules of procedure or other policies of the town?
Great. So I'm going to let Paul talk about major responsibilities of the town council.
Thanks, Athena. So we're going to be showing the slides and then taking them down. The the goal is for everybody to see each other easily and to have it be more interactive. So, you know, normally if we did a slide presentation, these slides would be up there the entire time we're talking. We're going to show them and then take them down. And so the big buckets of things that the town council is responsible for is that the council establishes the overall goals for the town. And that's done through a number of mechanisms, typically through either policy statements or through the the goals for the town manager. The second thing is that you're in charge of setting the policies for the town. And and that is done through your adoption of different bylaws, either the general bylaw or zoning bylaws. And and you can also adopt resolutions. So these are actions of the council. And each one has a different vote quantum. But the way you set policy is by making law. You are the legislative branch of the town government. The second, the third big bucket of things is that you is finances. You are ultimately responsible for approving the budget for the operating budget, the capital budget. You approve the Community Preservation Act appropriation. These are all things that come to the council. You deliberate on them as the process, however you establish. And then ultimately, these things only happen if the council votes on them. And you also are responsible for auditing the town's finances. Obviously, we have an auditing firm who comes and does that. But there's an audit committee of the town council that's required in the charter. And then you are the ones who hire the audit committee who comes in and audits the town's books. And then the auditor comes back and reports to you as the overseer of of the town. Other functions that are outlined in the charter, and this is not everything, there's a million other things that you'll be have. But these are the major ones, is that you're the keeper of the public way. And some of the things in the public way, the council, the the council said, oh, we gave that to the town manager to just do. We don't, we don't care to see about those things. Other things are in the in your purview. And you can always take anything that you've delegated back at any moment in time. You can always override the town manager or any of those things. But if it's in the public way, it's in the count, the town council's prerogative. The other role you play is as water and sewer commissioners. So you are the town's Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. That means you set the rates for water and for sewer. And you oversee those operations, the the big policy things. And you will be seeing in the next calendar year, policies for water and policies for sewer coming to you as for your review. And typically, you know, we, the town staff will produce them, present them to the council. The council will deliberate them, give it to a committee however it wants to look at it, and then come back and say, we like this, we don't like this. You can vote however you want on those things. And then the last big thing is that you have appointing authority. So you appoint the the major land use decision making bodies of the town, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. You appoint the clerk of the council and me. Those are the two staff that you appoint directly. And then you confirm a number of town council appointments, any town manager appointments. I mean, any town manager appointment, whether it's a department head or a member of a appointed body, comes to the town council. For appointed bodies, you have thirty days to review it. And then you can approve it, disapprove it, or take no action, in which case it's automatically approved. For department heads, you have fourteen days, once I submit it to you and to the town clerk, to approve it, disapprove it, or take no action, in which case it's automatically approved. So those are the sort of big bucket of your responsibilities as you start to conceptualize where we are in terms of what does the council do? And of course, if you look back at council, the council did a hundred other things, but these are the big ones.
Is there a question or two at this time for either Athena or Paul? Okay, seeing none, Athena, we're going to go on to your tour of the website.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm going to just point out a few things on our website and easy ways to find them. So you'll see, you can see, this is my little administrator bar on the top, so you can ignore that. But there are some really helpful links under this tab called Your Government. And this is right on our homepage, amherstma.gov. So under Your Government, you'll find links to the town council's main webpage, a link to all the council committee pages, policies adopted by the town council, the town manager's evaluation documents. Here is a link to all boards and committees of the town that are not of the town council. And then over here, under transparency, there is general bylaws, zoning bylaws and so forth. The charter, there's a link to the charter right here. The bulletin board is here. Every reference in the charter that says that something must be posted on the bulletin board, here's where that bulletin board exists on our website. Down here at the bottom of our main page, you'll find the public meeting notice board. We also have one of these on the town council page that's just the council and council committee calendar. And one other thing I wanted to point out is this tab that says, how do I, under Stay Connected, if you haven't already, you can subscribe to board and committee meeting notices, bulletin board notices, news items, community events, emergency alerts. It's really, really helpful. You can go in there and customize exactly what notifications you want to see. So if you haven't already done that, I suggest that.
Okay, are there questions at this time? Okay, then Paul and Athena, we're going to go on to communication protocols.
Dorothy has her hand up.
I'm sorry, Dorothy.
I just wanted to mention for new counselors that council committees, that would be finance, CRC and TSO, you find under council, but under the other committees, alphabetical up to H or L or whatever, you can find all the all the committees and commissions and boards. So I use that a lot. And if you go down where she showed you, if you go past the picture where where everybody's standing there, the group picture, where it has the meetings for the week, there's a little line that says more meetings. And sometimes there'll be one or two other small meetings that are included there. And it's a way of checking. And usually by checking for agenda, you get the link. And sometimes you get the the link that says where the necessary documents are. Maybe you know all those things, but it took me a long time to learn them.
Thanks, Dorothy. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, then Paul and Athena. Communications protocols.
Yeah, so this is this is a really important one, because this is how we communicate with each other and how you communicate with with staff of the town. So in many ways, when you become a counselor, you actually have fewer rights. Because the charter says you can't influence or direct in any way town staff. That's that's the that rests with the responsibility of the town manager. And so we've established pretty good protocols for that for the council. We ask that all communication that you would like to do flow through the manager or through Athena. But it mostly goes through the manager because the manager is responsible for supervising, hiring, firing, doing all the work, making sure the work is done. And we we really can't have thirteen different people out there talking to our council, our town staff. And it's a matter of managing work workload as well. So it's really a hard thing to conceptualize, but I want you to know that this is, our town staff really pay attention to who you are. If you go into some offices, you will see that they have pictures of all the counselors on their walls. Because they want to know who you are, that you are the, you are their boss's boss. And that's how they think of it. So when you call up and say, I just want to ask this question, in their mind, they're thinking, oh, my boss's boss is calling me. What does that mean? How do I? And so they are all instructed to funnel their request from you to me. And and we, I mean, we don't, we try to work it as best we can because we don't want to like be a a super barrier to this, but we have to be able to manage the workflow. And we can't have just one counselor sort of dominating a lot of time of individuals. Sometimes there's a specific project and we say, go work on it, you know, together with our town staff. But it's really important for you to understand the orientation of our town staff. When they look at you and they get an email from you or a phone call, they go on high alert because there's like, oh, this could show up at a council meeting. My boss could be yelled at for this or something. So it's this, just be alert and be courteous of our staff that way. Even though you couch it in so many nice words, they aren't going, they're not going to receive it that way. And that's just a fact of how we how people view the council. You are the highest elected officials in the town and they look at you that way. That being said, even though you're the highest elected officials in the town, you only have power where when you're in the in the in the, when you're together. You know, as individual counselors have virtually no, they have no power outside the a meeting of the council where a quorum is present and a majority of you raise your hand and take action. That's how the council acts. Someone makes a motion, somebody seconds it, and the council votes by majority. And then we move forward. Sometimes it requires a two thirds vote. So I think that's sort of what I have, Athena, you went to add to that.
Sure, I asked Paul to say some nice things about this and then I would say mean things. I think Paul was pretty mean about that, so that was great. All I would add is that to to kind of clarify some of the things that I do versus some of the things that Paul does so that you know who to ask for help. And the easiest thing is always just to email us both. If you have a question and you're not sure who who the right person is, you can email the town manager's office and me, and the right person will get back to you. So I provide administrative support to the council and committees. So I'm in charge of posting meetings, bulletin board notices, meeting materials. I maintain the council files, orders and so forth. Right now, I'm assisting with technology issues and doing all the Zoom stuff. So if you see that there's a meeting that was held, but you can't find the link to the meeting recording, you can reach out to me for that. I'm sort of your first line of defense for technology issues. We'll talk more about computers in a moment. But if something's not working right on your computer, sometimes I can help. And then if I can't, then I I hand it off to our excellent IT staff. And then, like I mentioned earlier, I advise on using the charter and the rules and open meeting law and so forth.
Let me just, I have one other thing. So I was supposed to be nice and say, whatever the council asks for, it's my job to make sure I deliver it to you. So that's right. That was the nice part. So when the council takes action, when the council has a meeting, when they're when they're to do items, most of them land in the Town Managers Act. And then, quite honestly, I usually give them to other people, make them, make sure, because we have such terrific staff and they do them. In terms of communication protocol, when you write, I mean, you could, you're welcome to write. You all have my personal email address, but you're probably wiser on certain things to write to townmanager@amherstma.gov. That is a distribution list. It goes to Angela Mills and Dave Zomack and other people on this floor so that we all get it, so that if it gets stuck in my mailbox, Angela gives me a list every week of like, I didn't see a response to this. You need to follow up on this. You need to follow up on that. You need to call this. There's a list. So if you send it to town manager, especially if it's something you want to, you think is a bigger issue, sometimes she will just take it and run with it without my intervention. And that's what we want. We want efficiency. So, you know, but if there's something you just like have a personal, not one on one question, feel free to use my personal email. You know, but if there's something you just like have a personal, not one-on-one question, feel free to use my personal email address. And the other thing is typically what we've done with council correspondents is that when counselors are writing about policy issues or something, they also, they copy the council president, it's really important for the, whoever's the council president is that they're alert to the issues that are popping up and that it's so that it, communication is with this slide is titled, and it's really important for us to have high level communication and we work really hard at that. Spend a lot of time together to sort of make sure the communication, Athena and Lynn meet multiple times. And that, well, that will happen with the president and then addition with the vice president and with the town manager and the assistant town manager. It's all about saying, are we all on the same page, do we have everything in front of us that we need to have in front of us, so the council can make an informed decision?
Just add one, another thing that sometimes happens is one counselor will raise a question. And actually Paul will spend some time putting the answer together and then we'll make sure that it goes to all of the counselors. So that no one counselor is advantaged by having information that the rest of the council does not have. The other piece that I just wanna say, the town staff is not our personal research staff. We may want all kinds of research and answers done, but they really have to be based on the agreement of the council as to what our priorities are. And that's, that will then determine where staff will be spending time. And again, that's a decision that Paul oversees.
And, and just one last thing, more often than not, if one counselor has a question or have a request, other counselors have the exact same thing. So just assume that if you're, it's good for you to articulate it to, to us. But, you know, and that's one of the reasons we ask you that, we, we manage the flow of request of information because if one person's saying, I want this particular information on this thing, it's probably because there's other people, there are also other people having the exact same conversation, so it helps us manage the staff that way, so we appreciate your help on that.
Do you wanna go on to, um, the next slide, which is the organizational structure, Paul, any specific things there?
I went by that one a little bit quickly because, just while Paul was talking, Paul is muted, but.
Yeah, yeah, that was just the organizational chart that comes out of the charter itself.
Athena?
Unless there are any questions? Okay, there's a lot to cover with technology and restrictions, um, oh, sorry Dorothy.
Okay, um, you, we're gonna get, all the new counselors are gonna get their pictures taken and I think we old counselors will get new pictures taken and they're posted on the town page. And I have a phone number there, which I realize I, I need to change, um, it's a number in my house, I decided. I don't check the email enough, so it's not good, I don't wanna put my personal, um, cellphone number on the public page. So I've noticed sometimes in the past, um, I think I'd wanna put the town number, um, I've gotten calls from you or Angela saying someone tried to call you through the town and then the call has been relayed to me. So I wanna go back to not having my personal number on it, and I, this is something that the new members have to think about. Is what, whether they're gonna put their own number on that or not. So, um, I thought I would bring this up and ask you what you think, what is, what is your position of the best thing to do?
Athena?
Um, it's really a personal preference, if you prefer to have your calls relayed through the town, um, the number that we use brings up to the town manager's office. Um, and Angela's really great about taking detailed notes. If people have a call with a concern or a complaint or a question and she'll relay those, those to you, usually be an email so that you have an opportunity to, um, see what the person said and get back to them. But it's up to you if you wanna use your personal number on that page, Dorothy, if you've changed your mind and you want me to put something different on there, send me an email, so, um, I can do that. And, um, are there any other questions before we go on? All right, there's a lot to cover with technology. And I'm going to follow this meeting up with an email tomorrow with a lot more information about the technology and restrictions and some other information that you'll need from the town when you begin your terms. The town has offered computers for counselors, um, their laptops, they have a built-in camera and microphone and speaker, so they're great to use for Zoom, you don't have to use the town's laptop. But there are some things that I want you to know when, when you make your decision. And that is that if you do decide to use a town device, that you only do town business on it and not personal business and certainly not campaign business on your town device. If you use your personal device, town staff don't support your personal device. So, um, if you have a MacBook at home that you like to use, that's perfectly fine if you wanna keep using it. But public records, like Lauren said, that are created on your personal computer are subject to the open meeting law. And, um, so a search could be done on your personal computer if you decide to use your personal computer for town business. And our staff can't support your personal computer, um, for IT support. Your town emails are gonna be active, I'm gonna send you an email about tomorrow about if you'd like a town computer, if you need any other technology resources, how to get into your town email. There's some other information that's gonna be coming from HR, um, you'll be town employees. And in order to receive your stipend, you'll need to fill out a W two, um, sign an acceptable use policy for technology. You'll need to bring in a copy of your driver's license or ID and so forth for HR. And then there's some other things that the town clerks, the town clerk normally distributes when she does a swearing and ceremony. The open meeting log guide, conflict of interest, uh, acknowledgement of receipt and training information, so lots of information coming via email. And I'm just gonna ask that anyone interested in receiving a town device, anyone needing to upgrade a town device that you currently have, just get in touch with me and we can, I can help you schedule a time to come in and meet with IT staff, they'll show you how to use it, how to log in and so forth. Um, and find a time to meet with HR, there's different ways of doing the HR stuff. There's a way of filling it out electronically and uploading it via OneDrive in a secure way, if you're more comfortable with that, so. Um, I'm hoping that we can all work one-on-one after tonight to get those things accomplished. Um, I also wanted to talk very briefly about SharePoint, once you're seated and you have access to SharePoint, will you'll be able to see what it looks like and become more familiar with it. Essentially, the things that we do in SharePoint are use Word documents and use Excel spreadsheets that maybe the council or council committees are in the process of developing. Everything that's shared during a meeting gets posted on the town website, but we post PDFs because those are accessible by everyone who has a computer. Word documents and Excel spreadsheets, you need that software in order to read those documents, so that's why we keep them separately. PDFs are readable by assistive reader, reader devices, if somebody has a disability as well, so we like to keep things in PDF on the town website. And documents that are in the process of being developed on SharePoint. But if you have questions about that, we can get into it, um, via email after tonight, if there are questions that occur to you later, you can reach out. I think that's all I have for now, unless there are questions.
So let me add a couple of things while people think of their questions, so, um, so we assume that people will want a device, if you two, you know, so it's, you're welcome to it and we're prepared to support that and we offered that the last time to the counselors and existing counselors may wanna upgrade their devices, so they're all sort of on the same thing. But if you choose to do your personal one, that's fine too. And that goes along with, sometimes people will say, well, I like a device, but I really like a mouse or I really like a second screen or something, any of those kind of technology supports you need, let us know and our IT team will outfit you with the, you know, right now we're meeting, we assume the council will decide how it wants to meet going forward. You will need some kind of device in order to do your work because we, we do not give you paper documents, everything is electronic. And that was a decision the council made early on, which was, has been a blessing, I'll be honest with you, for a lot of different reasons, it's just made the counselors work much more efficient. You know, if you need a piece of paper, a document that's too really big, we can produce that for you. But typically, everything is done electronically. The other thing I want to mention is that whichever device you use, if you're using the town email address, that is captured in our town servers, so if there's a public records request, we will just go on the town server and collect that for you, you don't have, you won't have to do that. And we, just for the record, for the record, we do, we have had public records requests for all counselor emails related to whatever it is. We want, someone will may have a, a public records request and we have to respond within ten days, our IT department will put in search parameters. You know, collect every email in the town system and then produce that. So again, whatever you write in a, on your public, assume it will be open to the public, so. I'm always really, you know, encouraging people to be very careful about informal language, you know, talking about someone else, assume that it's gonna be out there in the public at some point, someday, sometime, someone's gonna ask for it. And it could just be reporters looking for stuff and sometimes they do that as well, so be, be alert to that kind of thing.
One more thing I'll add before we move on is, um, if we do hybrid meetings, every, the way we've done it in the past has been for people to have their devices in front of them so that they can connect via Zoom to a Zoom meeting while we're in the room together and that allows the public to see a nice picture of you while you're talking to people in the room. So if you decide to use a personal device and it doesn't have the capability of bringing it into the town room and setting it up that way, you might consider taking us up on that offer to use a town device, so you can bring a computer in and use it that way.
Are there other questions? This is an area that I'm sure will generate more questions as, uh, we move forward. Jennifer?
Thank you, I just wanted to ask, so with our town email address, will that be made available like on our cell phones? If we want to answer an email from our phones, yes, okay.
It's, it's Outlook, so you can, you can download Outlook application on your phone. We are gonna be using a two-factor authentication system, so you'll learn more about that when we set up your, your emails and share all that information.
Yeah, so that's a really good point Athena, we're putting, we have a special emphasis on cybersecurity statewide. All the municipalities and the state are really paying a lot of attention, so two-factor authentication, which means you have to check in with something before you log in is becoming the norm for us. And so we're, we're implementing that across the board. And the other thing is, um, there is a, people often, I'm not sure if we're gonna cover this later, but they can, if they write to towncouncil@amherstma.gov, that will go to everybody here. So if someone writes to town council, that gets distributed to every counselor, we'll get the exact same email, it just makes it easier for people who wanna type in every name. And it's on the website and so everybody gets communicated with that one time for the public.
And that will change over on January third, so all the counselors elect will become part of that distribution list and counselors that aren't continuing on, their emails will be archived and taken off that list.
Other questions? Okay, um, so, uh, the next section is really about the duties of the president and the vice president. And so, um, let me start and also point out that with Mandy Jo here, who served two terms as vice president, she may have things to add in as well. So the charter and the rules of procedure very much dictate the role of the president and the vice president. But in addition to that, and this was one of the questions that was advanced in advance of the meeting. It has been my decision and the council's agreed that I respond to all emails addressed to town council, although counselors are also welcome to respond, my response will be as as vanilla as I can make it, often it will be to send somebody to a link on a webpage or it will be to tell people when the next meeting is going to be, it's to thank them, people do like to hear from you and they like to hear from the council. I respond to all communications from counselors and the town manager and staff as designated by the town manager. I respond to all press inquiries or if there's somebody else in the council who is more appropriate to respond to something, I'll ask them to respond, um, and counselors are also welcome to respond to the press. We keep, I keep a continuously updated list of future agenda items. We do agenda setting two weeks before every meeting, um, and we review motions. Trying to do that earlier rather than later, uh, but sometimes, for instance, this week it didn't get finished until Saturday, I think. The president generally meets individually with chairs of standing committees to items they see coming up and what the rhythm of those items may be. And that's on a irregular basis, but nevertheless, an important way to keep up with what's going on. We organize, uh, with suggested content and timeline, committee responses to such things as the transition memos, which are now being either in your packet already or we have one more being developed. So I'll provide a town, an outline, uh, the same thing is true for when we do the end of the year required reports from each of the elected bodies. Um, and I'll send them an email, tell them kind of what needs to be in, expected length of time and so, of pages and so forth. Prepare slides, order and timing of the agenda. Uh, and send all counselors and others who will be presenting or answering questions at an upcoming meeting. Rehearse or review and decide which slides will be shown with the clerk to the town council. Usually we do that on the Monday afternoon before the meeting. Send emails and meet with new presenters to the town council to discuss timing, length of presentations, dates when packed up materials and slides are due. Alicia and Michelle have all had those kinds of meetings with me as they prepared for their various committees coming forward. Meet biweekly with the bid and chamber along with the town manager and assistant town manager. Meet monthly with Senator Commerford and Representative Dom along with the town manager, I might mention that this last fall, that's kind of gotten intermittent, it's not been monthly. Attend or ask for volunteers from the town council to attend events on behalf of the town council. Organize proclamation readings by the town council on Town Hall. Um, and there's other things, this is not an exhaustive list. And let, let me just pre- preface the next section, which is on the vice president and that is, Mandy Jo was vice president for two years and Evan Ross for one year. And they played their role two very different ways. One, when Mandy Jo was vice president and, and a terrific vice president, uh, just unbelievably helpful in so many ways. Particularly because of her knowledge of the charter and because of her own legal background. It, it was a very interactive, um, vice president to president. But frankly, some counselors felt that was too powerful and that there was too much power vested in two people and they wanted it more spread out. So, um, as we moved into electing the next vice president, uh, people wanted that person to basically be available to, uh, serve if the president was not able to serve. Now, they, therefore they did attend agenda setting meetings and so that they were always aware of what was coming up on the agenda. And there's been at least one or two occasions when I've either lost power when I was at home or something and all of a sudden the vice president has had to jump in. Mandy Jo, do you have other things you wanna add to that list?
I guess the other thing would be, you know, the, the vice president's role under the charter is to stand in for the president, so that's not just at meetings. Um, the other thing I did beyond some of the consultation role that differed between my vice presidency and and Evan Ross's vice presidency was when Lynn was not available to speak at some event. It, it came to me, um, so that's, that's the other thing, I, I think I did some ribbon cuttings, I did some welcoming's for library. Um, executive directors for meetings like that, um, I attended some of the monthly UMass meetings in the months that Lynn wasn't available, so, so that was some of the other things that I did for standing in for the president while I was vice president, so it's not just meetings you stand in for.
Right.
Lynn, Vice President Ross has joined us, so I just wanna confirm that he can hear us and we can hear him.
Evan?
Yep, I can hear you.
Welcome, so I don't know how much of the role of vice president conversation you've taught, but if you would like to chime in, since you've been the other vice president of the council, um, and talk a little bit about your role.
Yep, I think, I, I think that Mandy and you basically covered it. My role was primarily to sit in and agenda setting and help the town council president. Figure out timelines, figure out how to, uh, make sure that the business of the council fit on to the schedule of the council. Um, and a lot of time spent trying to figure out how to make those meetings, uh, shorter, not always successfully. Um, but we did our best to try to figure out. Um, but we did our best to try to figure out, uh, what can be prioritized, what can be deprioritized in a way to try to make the meetings more manageable for the councillors. Um, unlike Mandy, because most of my vice presidency was during COVID, there were not as many events and certainly not in person, many in person events where I had to stand in for Lynn. Um, and so that responsibility never came to me. Um, but I was always insured that I was prepared to take over the meeting, uh, should I need to, um, given, given the virtual, uh, given the virtual environment, the possibility of power outages or shaky internet often meant um, just making sure I was prepared. Other than that, I think I think y'all covered it.
A heartbeat away.
Um, are there questions? Michelle?
Yeah, um, Lynn, when we sat down to talk about this a little bit, I had asked you about agenda setting meetings and whether or not other councillors who are not in those roles could or should attend and just.
Yes. So what we try to do is set up a calendar of all of the agenda setting meetings that we're going to have. And then we have sent that out and suggested that councillors who are interested, it's not a requirement, sign up for two or more meetings, preferably two, till we see how many you want. And, uh, I think they're informative. Um, I think people also realize that if you don't like seeing sausage made, don't do it. Uh, the other thing is if you, but they're really also not, um, there's no, there's no secret to them. Okay. It's really literally going through the agenda, looking at what might go on the um, um, consent agenda, looking at the order of items on the agenda. And I think it's been very informative for other councillors to make, to come and visit and join us for those meetings. I think we've done that the last two years. And I think we would probably, you know, the next president would want to do, see if they want to do that again. Um, Michelle, was there any other question on that one? Are there other questions? So I think the bottom line is it's really up to the council, what kind of role they want the vice president to play. Um, and I it's also something, uh, that I'm hoping that we will all have a robust conversation about how we can shorten our meetings, because I think each of us have some ideas and we need to share them. Okay, we're going to go on to the standing committees and staff support. Let me just say that the evolution evolution of the standing committees for the town council has been an interesting one, but it seems to have gotten into a settled, steady state. The finance committee is the only committee required by the charter. Okay? And what you have in front of you is each of the committees, and we're going to have the chairs, the present chair of each of those committees, talk about that committee briefly, talk about the charge and, um, so forth. The, um, once the council is seated, a poll would be taken to see who wants to be on which committees for second, third preference. Um, and then the president appoints to these committees. And in the past, I have done that in consultation with people. If I've had to stand, you know, say to somebody, listen, you know, I have, there's 10 people who want to be on X committee, so I really need to talk with you about your second choice. Um, those kinds of things do happen. Uh, there are other assignments that the council does have besides these, but I want to use this time and start with Mandy Jo on CRC.
I will try to be really brief because I know there's a lot to get done. So CRC is shorthand for the Community Resources Committee and, um, many of you probably have an idea of what we do because we've been active in the last year or more, but, um, we are charged with, um, dealing with advising the council on matters that relate to the long term economic vitality, quality of life in Amherst, land use, master plan, economic development, arts, culture, neighborhood housing. That's a whole lot of stuff. Um, so what we do is review and make recommendations regarding measures and other things that relate to planning, zoning, the master plan, land use, housing, homelessness, community sustainability initiatives, um, and local economy. So so economic development. We also are the ones that make recommend recommendations to the town council on the appointments to the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. So some of the things we've done in the last couple of years are draft and make a recommendation on adoption of a comprehensive housing policy. Um, deal with and make recommendations on a whole host of zoning articles, um, bylaws, and we uh, coordinated a process to get the council to adopt the master plan per the Charter, section 9.8. Um, and we've done some of those zoning that we've done have also related to economic development. And so those are just a few of the many we did. Um, and in terms of transition, I just wanted to go over some of the things that will stay with, um, the this council as we transition through, we have three referrals that we have not completed. Um, the first one, I'm I'm going to take them out of order, but the first one is the comprehensive housing policy for implementation. That's been referred to CRC and the um, town manager for implementation. So that's one that will probably stay for a long time at CRC because it's a massive policy and there's a lot to go on and to figure out how to implement. And the second one is zoning by law article 16 temporary moratorium on permitting and approval of large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations. This was sponsored by two of our current councillors who are also continuing on to the second council. And it was referred on November 8th after the election and is in the process of getting through the public hearing stage. And so CRC will actually be one of the first committees to meet of the new council because it will be holding its public hearing on January 10th. At 7:00 PM, the meeting will start at 6:45. Um, I believe we've decided in consultation with Lynn and Athena today that we will be holding that meeting on Zoom. Um, so we're working on making all those notifications happen, but I would ask that anyone who is hoping to be on CRC, mark their calendar for January 10th, um, at 6:45 for a meeting because this will be the public hearing, um, on that zoning by law article. We have CRC is the council body that holds the required MGL public hearing that the council must hold. It has delegated that to CRC. And then the third one is sort of a a it is a referral regarding apartments of the zoning by law, and it was a referral that dealt with two parts of the apartments by law. And the council has only voted on one of those two parts. And so the other part still remains um, semi in committee, semi at the council, the committee's made a recommendation. Um, at the same time, the committee probably could use another discussion on that recommendation and on the language going with it. So you'll see that in the transition memo, but those are the three automatic holdovers that CRC will be dealing with coming up. It also must start with, there are two associate member vacancies to the zoning board of appeals, um, that that need dealt with. Um, our committee in this, in the last couple of months tried to, but we did not receive enough applications, um, to be able to go forward to interviews with those openings. And so I encourage all of you to encourage people to submit their applications. Um, I can get Athena to extend that um, notice, but, um, I was planning on we'll get CRC to issue a new notice soon enough. Um, but if you've got people in mind, start talking to them about appointments. I think that's all I have right now, Lynn. Questions are fine. I'll take those.
Lynn, you're muted. And I'd I'd also like to note that, um, councillor Ryan has joined us. George, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
And please stay unmuted, George, because you're next. And then we're going to go and take questions about committees after that. So George has been the chair of GOL for three years, George?
Hmm, yeah, a long time. Let me just give you a quick sense of, um, what you all does and then we can briefly go through the transition memo. I take that's what, Lynn, you would like. Is there anything else besides that? Okay. This committee is, uh, one that basically deals with documents that are presented to the council, proclamations, resolutions. Uh, what else? Um, uh, commemorations and citations, uh, public statements by the council that simply need to be reviewed in advance to make sure they're clear, consistent, actionable. That's a fair amount of what we do. Um, and, uh, we also review bylaws for the same, uh, under the same criteria. And part of our task is to secure that there is legal review, make sure that is done and it's in the council packet. We also make recommendations to the council on appointments to FinCom. Um, so that's a particular task that's been given to GOL. We review annually the rules of procedure for the council and, um, any kinds of changes that are uh, requested is something that we would look at and then report back to the council. Uh, we also prepare the town manager performance goals document, the yearly document. We're actually working on it tonight. Um, we prepare that, um, for the council and, um, and that's another task that we have. What else do we do? It's primarily the main task that we have. As far as the transition memo, um, let me see if I have it on my screen. We only have one item that, uh, will most likely will be carried over to the next council, which has to do with the solar, uh, the proposed, uh, moratorium on permitting and approval of large scale solar mounted photovoltaic installation. That is one item that will be carried over. We have a number of items that, uh, listed in the transition memo that we're going to ask the town manager to report back on. We were given the task of reviewing a set of bylaws that, uh, needed work and we made a fair amount of progress, but a number of bylaws we could not, um, get enough information on to make a resolution. And so, uh, those, that set of bylaws is going to be, um, presented to the town manager uh, with a request for information and that will be coming back to the council and I assume back to GOL, um, at some point in the coming year.
And George, you also, uh, from time to time, review the committee charges.
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay. Andy, finance committee.
Okay, uh, well, finance committee was just mentioned, uh, in a couple of ways. One is that Lynn mentioned that it was in the charter and that is unlike any other committee. And, uh, so anybody who's interested in the finance committee and you want to do research on it is probably worth looking at that section, but it's also worth looking at that section for all councillors because the budget process is really a lot of the charge, uh, what the charge is about. And I think everybody is interested in what the, uh, budget process is. The other thing that's, uh, provided in the charter is the possibility, and George mentioned this from GOL perspective, that, um, the committee can include in addition to council members, resident members. And we only have that one committee that has resident members, which is why the GOL has a process when there's a vacancy. We've decided on three positions and we're, um, they have terms. And so when either a vacancy is, uh, occurs, uh, or there's a turn, um, reaching an end of a term, that's where GOL gets involved with, uh, the appointment, uh, the three resident members and non-voting members. And, uh, we've sort of been working our way through this as a process over the past few years, but have come into a very comfortable place where resident members fully participate in all meetings so that at times, uh, when we have, uh, a financial issue before the council, it is posted as a finance committee in addition to being posted as a council meeting, which some ways doesn't, isn't required for any other committee, but is required so that we can bring in the three resident members. And, uh, when we do votes, we ask the resident members if they support an issue, but we can only count votes of the, um, council members of the committee. And so it's, uh, right in the last term, we had it set up as five council members and three resident members. Um, so getting back to the budget, because that's the one that most people end up being concerned about, I, uh, again encourage, uh, everyone who hasn't done it already to read that section of the charter. Uh, and I just want to emphasize that, uh, this, uh, thing that is, I think, best known is that the town manager delivers a budget on May 1st. The finance committee has, uh, 30 days to review the budget and make a recommendation of the council. The council then has, um, the responsibility during the month of June to, uh, make a final decision as to whether it is going to, um, support the budget. It can reduce, but it cannot increase. And, uh, that is not the creation of our charter commission. That is in fact provided by state law. The charter exactly tracks what Massachusetts general laws provide for uh, the, uh, responsibilities of a council and of a chief executive, whether it be a mayor elected or a town manager appointed. Um, it is, um, the same provision to the same statute that applies. Um, the council is interested in, um, for at least doing to provide some guidance, um, in what, um, we think as a council is most important. Um, we have budget guideline process, so, um, finance committee doesn't, um, you know, we didn't do a transfer memo yet. I, where I'm going to do some sort of memo, but it'll look different from any other committee, because most of what we are doing is driven by a calendar that is the budget development calendar, which starts out in the fall with, uh, information provided by the town manager, the finance director about the, um, amount of money that they project to be available and their initial recommendations, not on specific issues, uh, other than what is required, but in the large buckets of municipal schools and library. Then the council, um, will develop guidelines which we to give to the, uh, town manager, which is the process that we're under right now. And it sort of goes back and forth between the committee and the council to try and get the committee to do the hard work and the council to make the, uh, some of the priorities in the end. Uh, the finance committee tries to be very careful in, uh, sort of outlining options, but not setting policy because policy belongs to the council and not to committees. And that's true on everything. The, uh, other things that I just, uh, will mention really quickly, so we can move on, is that, um, there's also questions of, um, making sure that we look at the, uh, water and sewer rates, which was mentioned a little bit earlier. And that is actually an ongoing issue that the council's looking at, or the committee is looking at the, um, the policy issues behind how that is established and what the rate structure is. The council will refer on many issues to the finance committee to comment on the financial consequences of something that is for the um, council and report back to the council in some manner, either directly or through another committee. And the best example I can have, because it's so fresh in everybody's mind, is that the town manager, uh, uh, has recently recommended and the council is in the midst of acting on those recommendations to, um, establish, uh, a CREST, um, department at the CSWG recommendation and also CSWG's recommendation, a DEI, uh, position within, um, uh, this within town government and, uh, the financial consequences of that that we commented on and, uh, sent it back through the committee that's responsible, uh, and then directly onto the council. So, um, if you look at financial consequences of things that are otherwise before the, um, council, uh, normally on council referral. And the last thing that I'll just mention is that, uh, partway through the first three years, um, we changed as a council and said, we don't we changed as a council and said, we don't need audit committee. We'll ask the Finance Committee to be the audit committee and to meet with other, the council's behalf. So that is also now a responsibility. And so Lynn, I think that's kind of the quickest summary I can do.
Okay. Thank you so much for each of you so far. And Evan.
But I'm sorry, Evan. It looks like Council Schreiber has joined us. Can we just confirm that he can hear us? Thanks.
Hi there.
Hi, thanks, Steve. So Evan TSO, you're the most recent Chair of TSO and you've been a member of it since I think the beginning, so.
Correct. Yep. So TSO is sort of the baby committee of the council and it was most recently created. It's the only one that hasn't really existed since the first year. It was created in March 2020. And so as such, TSO is the only committee of the council that has never met in person, has only ever met virtually. So there's essentially four areas of responsibility for TSO, which is town services and outreach. And so town services is anything that affects the provision of town services. And so one of the big categories of measures that we look at are any bylaws or policies that might impact how departments operate or how departments provide services to the public. So for example, the, the two main ones that we dealt with over the past term were, one, the package of bylaws that had to do with wage theft because they had impacts on procurement. And two, the surveillance technology bylaw, because that impacted the use of technology by different town departments. And so anything that affects our town departments, anything that affects how they serve the community goes to TSO. We also deal with town manager appointments. So whereas CRC deals with town council appointments to Planning Board and the ZBA. And whereas GOL deals with town council appointments to the Finance Committee, any town manager appointments are reviewed by TSO. And so most of these are appointments to committees. So any, any appointment to a committee, we review and make a recommendation to the council on to whether to approve or reject the town manager's appointment. I will just say, our review tends to be confined to whether or not he followed the, his normal process. We really don't weigh in too much on the qualifications of the candidates. We are very deferential to the town manager and his appointments, because they are, at the end of the day, his appointments and have been made often in consultation with the chair of the relevant committee and always utilizing the resident advisory committee. So we are really just to check on the process at the end. And we also make recommendations regarding the town manager's appointments to department heads, which the town council can approve or reject as well. So those are the first two buckets, measures that affect the provisions of town services, town manager appointments. The third big bucket that we deal with is anything that has to do with the public way. And so this typically falls into one or two categories. So one is any long-term reservation of a public way. So reservation of parking, reservation of sidewalks, reservation of the town common, or any permanent change or alteration to the public way. So example of things that we've done most recently was our approval of the construction of a permanent outdoor performance shell on the town common, which is a permanent alteration to our town common. And so that went through TSO. The major infrastructure project that will be happening at Palmory Village, the installation of a roundabout, that went through TSO because that was also a permanent alteration to the public way. This is where one of our carryover items, one of our bigger carrier items is, which is a proposal from the town manager and Department of Public Works for a number of alterations to the public way on North Pleasant Street in North Amherst between Pine Street and Eastman Lane. And it's a whole package of changes involving construction of side, new sidewalks, movement of sidewalks, removal of some crosswalks, addition of some crosswalks, a potential small roundabout. And so that is one carryover item that will go to the next TSO that is in TSO because it's a permanent alteration to a public way. The, another, a second carryover item that's slightly smaller that will go to the next TSO has to do with long-term reservation of parking spaces, spaces by lunch carts, which is something that's being done to clarify jurisdiction between the town council, keepers of the public way and the Board of License Commissioners as the licensing authority for lunch carts. The other sort of area where public ways typically get invoked has to do with on-street parking. And so if you had followed the conversation over parking, potential parking prohibitions on Lincoln Ave. Recently, we altered parking regulations on Kendrick Place. And so any, any alteration, creation of new parking, change in regulation to new park, to parking goes through TSO. Per state law and per our bylaw and per our public ways policy, we have to hold a public hearing anytime we change parking regulations. And TSO is the body that holds the public hearing on behalf of the council. So in the same way that CRC holds the required zoning public hearings on behalf of the council, TSO requires any hearings that are required as part of changes to parking regulation on behalf of the council. So those are the three big buckets that we typically deal with. So anything that affects the provision of town services, town manager appointments, and then anything that has to do with the public way that hasn't been delegated to the town manager, as you may have seen in our public ways policy, a bunch of public way requests do get delegated to the town manager, but larger ones still come to the council. The last piece, you notice when we say TSO, town services and outreach, is that outreach component. And that's a component that this TSO didn't really engage with much. But technically, anything that has to do with council outreach goes through TSO. And there is one carryover item that's related to that, which is from the participatory budgeting commission. And so you'll see that in our carryover report. It was a referral from the council to act on one of the recommendations of the participatory budgeting commission. And that really falls under TSO's outreach responsibility. But most of what this TSO has done, the current TSO, has really fallen within the realm of public ways requests, town manager appointments, and any measures, including especially bylaws that affect the town departments. That's TSO.
Right. Are there questions for any of the chairs of these various committees? Okay. And it is anticipated that within the first week of the council, after swearing in, appointments would be made to these committees. Let me just briefly mention, and they've been mentioned before, the transition memos all are available except for the Finance Committee, which will be available by next Monday. The town council is also in the process of approving a set of financial guidelines for FY22, approving town manager goals for the next, for the coming year, and approving a calendar, and we did approve a calendar for 2022. Each one of these items can be reviewed and adjusted, changed, amended, if you will, by the next council. But I will just say that the previous select board handed our first, our council each one of these documents. And all I can say is thank heavens, because we would have spent so much time trying to get to that point. And this gave us a starting place. And we did not adjust the town manager roles. Occasionally, there's an adjustment to the, at least in the first year. Occasionally, there's adjustments to the calendar. And occasionally, and we did one year when we were in the very beginning of COVID, have to do an adjustment to the financial guidelines. So these are documents that are produced every year and become real guidelines for the council and an expression, if you will, of our priorities as well as what we want the town manager to pay attention to. Finally, we do have a code of conduct and debate. And it is in your packet. It's in our Rules of Procedure 6.03. And it, we also have a statement of values, which is in Appendix A of the Rules of Procedure. At this point, what I'd like to do is take the last opportunity of these last, if you will, fifteen to actually almost twenty minutes and see what kinds of questions you have and what we can do to answer those. Let me mention one question. I'm going to turn to Paul for the answer on this. One question was, what responsibility does the town have over the schools? The town council over the schools?
Thanks, Lynn. So ultimately, the town council approves the budget for schools, the allocation for the regional school district and for the, the town operations and the library operations. So all those budgets, ultimately, you have to come through the town council. You are the appropriating authority. Money can't be spent unless it's been appropriated by the town council. The budget process for each of those entities is independent. But ultimately, that's, that's the case. Is that the type of question?
I think, I think the other thing is, we do not, for example, get into curriculum decisions of the schools. We don't get into hiring decisions of the schools. Nobody from the council or the town manager's office sits on the school committee, which is different than in some of the larger cities. For instance, in Boston, the mayor sits on the school committee. But that is not the case in Amherst. And that's all described in the charter.
Yeah. And I think the reason for that is that they're, they, their school committee and the Board of Library trustees are elected by the people, just like you are. They are on equal footing, but they have different, you know, different responsibilities. But they are elected officials. They get their power from the voters in the charter, just like you get your power from the voters and the charter. The one, the one place where the town manager has a role is in collective bargaining with the schools. The town manager sits on the, in, not in the discussions, but has the ability to be participate in that decision-making process as, as one vote in essence.
Okay. What other questions do you have? Anna.
So I have a question and I, I'm going to apologize in advance if this was somewhere in the packet and I missed it. Could you talk a little bit about liaison appointments to things like CPA, ECAC, all of those? Like, can you give me an overview of what committees have liaison, and not all of them do, so what committees have liaisons? How that role is or should be in, maybe considered in the future to be defined? Or lack of thereof? And how long those appointments last? Whatever else you think we should know?
Right now, the town council has liaison positions to nine committees. You can see who those nine committees are by looking at the agenda for tonight under reports by liaison committees. The, the role and responsibilities of liaisons is clearly defined in our Rules of Procedure. It is to be there as a resource. You are not a voting member. You actually, when you're physically in the room, you don't necessarily even sit at the table. You basically, and some liaisons, for example, are much more active than others. The most recent liaison that we created was in fact to the African Heritage Reparations Assembly. The, which committees we have liaisons to is something that GOL will review at the beginning of this council. And then a poll will be taken to see which councils are interested in serving as liaisons to which committees. And that means you really, you, you should attend when you can. But more importantly, you need to be on their mailing list. You need to be able to keep up with what it is they're doing. And if they have anything that needs to come to the council, make sure you work with the president to help do that. Is that helpful?
Can I ask a follow-up question? And this is, it's, it's specific, right? So why then is ECAC different? Because I believe the liaison role, am I mistaken that the liaison role on ECAC is structured? And I'm looking at Evan because I know he was in that role for a little while. Is that structured differently than the other?
The, the ECAC was not actually a liaison. We actually started when we did ECAC, we actually had two members of the council who were voting members. That, that is something that has not necessarily been something the council has a brace going forward. Although we do have voting members of building committees. And as of January 3rd, or 1st, or whatever, January 3rd, ECAC will no longer have council members on, as voting members. And one of the committees that the council may decide they would like to have a liaison to would be ECAC.
Thank you. That does help.
Pam?
I, I think you started to say it, but I'm going to ask the rest of the question. And that is, is there one place for all of these transition docs to be placed? So that we can go to one, one place and find them all?
They, they will be on the council web, council part of the town webpage. Athena, change, do you want to correct that?
They're in the packet for the meeting tonight. Once you have access to SharePoint, you'll have access to all the committee documents there and you can see how things are organized. I'm sure that, I, I leave the SharePoint site to committee chairs to organize however they see fit. And I'm sure the transition memos are, memos are there as well. And if committee chairs felt that it was appropriate to add those to their committee pages as a link, then we could add those to the committee pages as well.
Pam, do you have a follow-up question? Okay. Michelle?
If there's something that we'd like to understand from a legal perspective, what is the process for, for getting that information from our council?
Processes that you write the president, the town manager and Athena with your question. And they will, if, unless they have the answer, they will, then the town manager then does all of the communication with the town attorney. And once we get a legal opinion, we either post it to a meeting agenda and/or share it with all counselors. Paul, anything else you want to add to that?
No, that's, that's accurate.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted, since you were talking a minute ago about what's available on SharePoint. I just want to explain the Finance Committee is actually not available on SharePoint because SharePoint belongs to the council. And since, as I reported, we have three resident members, which means that we cannot include Finance Committee as posting site as the SharePoint site, because it would be unfair to those three members. So we try our best to get the postings into the packet in the website instead.
Okay, thank you. Next, other questions? Kathy?
It's less a question, but a follow-on on Andy. So we have other committees that have counselors on them. Lynn, you've mentioned the school building committee. There's the library building. And the other one is the Joint Capital Planning Committee. Since those are not just counselors, all the materials for anything that goes on in those committees is on the town website, either as a packet or sometimes there's a delay in getting things into the packet, but we try to post whatever is discussed. So Anna is on a CPAC, so it's much more similar to CPAC. Where if you want to find out what's happening with CPAC, there's not an internal set of documents you can go to. And I, I just want to say for those, we vote. Those aren't president appointments. We, there are ex-counselor slots and people raise their hands saying, I'd like one of those. There's some guidelines on, someone should free me from the Finance Committee. But you say you're interested and if there are more people that are interested for the number of slots, then we vote. So it's a slightly different process than Lynn appointing to the council-only official council committees.
Right. The other one is the Budget Coordinating Group, which is set up in the charter as well. Pam?
Hi, if there's any discussion about reworking the charges for each of the subcommittees, will there need to be sort of a GOL review of all of those before we settle on a final product for each of the committees?
Yes.
From that process happening. Thank you.
I think quite, it's, as with anything, if a counselor would like something to be discussed in the council, which is the only place you discuss things, is you is you notify the president that you would like that as an agenda item. And they will put it on the agenda when it's reasonable. If it's going to be an issue like, you know, reorganizing committee structures and so forth, it then gets a point, referred to GOL and then comes back to the council. I, I just want to comment that on, the committees are very, very work, they're working committees. They are absolutely and completely very, very important to the council's working. It's where the deep discussions often take place. And that, so it's, and it's where working an item up and so that it's ready, if you will, to come to the council for an actual vote. And that's really one of the huge responsibilities of all of the committees. So Pam, did you have other questions? Okay, Jennifer, one last question, maybe?
Yes, it was really a follow-up, but Kathy kind of answered it. When we're discussing committees that, you know, and are interested in being on different committees. So then those like the library committee, the school building project, those will be part of the discussion.
The, the two, the, here are the committees that the council decides on. And in fact, in an agenda that I've prepared for the first meeting as a draft, it's, I mean, the person elected president then runs a meeting. The two of them are more important to get done, if you will, although BCG might be as well. So here are the three committees, the four committees. There is one position open on the school building committee. Kathy already serves on the school building committee and she was appointed as long as she is on the council. Am I correct on that one? Okay. Second of all, and, but Steve Schreiber is no, not continuing on the council. The other one is the Jones Library Building Committee. And that's a committee that's just getting started. But it's getting started and it needs to get moving because, as you know, we're now moving forward with the library. The two others are Joint Capital Planning Committee. And actually, interestingly enough, that committee has pretty much finished its work for, I'm sorry, no, Joint Capital Planning Committee, that committee will begin its work in a very hard and serious way. And they basically spend their time looking at the not major big capital investments, but all of the other capital investments. Vehicles, new room, technology, dump trucks, I mean, the whole fire trucks, the whole set of other capital issues, okay? And they make a recommendation and they are advisory to the town manager, who then will look at that recommendation and decide what to include in the budget. And then the third one, which has not been active until just recently, and that's Budget Coordinating Group. And that is rep, just like JCPC, Joint Capital Planning Committee, it has representatives of the schools, the town council and the Jones Library. And the JCPC and BCG are meetings of those representatives of each of those. And the purpose for BCG is to talk about budget guidelines and budget issues. And at this point, the schools have asked that BCG actually meet. There are three of us who are presently on BCG and will be meeting in December. And then we will then do another round of, if you will, election to BCG in January. Kathy? Then I just want to add, because you were giving numbers, JCPC has three counselors on it. And as Lynn said, it starts this work. It's an intensive period of work, but it starts in February. And it's usually over by the end of March because we have to put together our view of the proposals that come. I've been on it. And then the town manager puts together the capital plan along with the budget, you know, so, but it's, it starts and ends. So it's not a committee that goes all year long. Right. And it is a committee, however, that also receives resident requests. Okay. And BCG, we decided would have three members and that meeting is coming up this week, I believe. Are there other questions? We wanted to make time for any other reflections from seated counselors, sage advice. We have about three minutes. I think three minutes sage advice would be, you know, useful. Dorothy? You got one minute.
I want to express our pleasure and joy at seeing the new faces of the new counselors and know that it's going to be very challenging. And I think that I can speak for all the counselors, that we are all willing to talk to you and tell you how we do it, or how somebody else does it, whatever. So please feel free to reach out to all the old and new counselors for advice because we're really happy that you're here. Thank you.
And old and new has nothing to do with age. Mandy Jo?
I have a second what Dorothy said about reaching out to anyone. You guys have in some sense a privilege that the first council didn't have, which is you have people you can go to that have done this for three years and we didn't. So whether it's a continuing counselor or someone who's stepping off, talk to them. But I also wanted to say, it took me a little bit, but this job, if you want to, want to say it as a job, can take as much time as it, you allow it to. So one of my things would be to set your own limits. I do my best to not do council work on the weekends, to take the weekends off. I think other counselors have done something the same, similar. So try to set limits because it, it is important, at least it's been important for my own mental health and wellbeing and my family's wellbeing, to be able to step away and set those limits.
And decide when you go on vacation, you're going to really be on vacation. Shalini?
I wanted to highlight the rules of procedure 6.1 and 6.3 about general rules for conduct during council and committee meetings. And that was a part, we didn't go into that in much detail today. So I really invite all of you to read that section because that's so fundamental to building trust with the community, for building trust with each other, for building trust with our staff and, and our committee members. So I think one thing that's left out there is how we, how we speak with each other during our meetings. And it is exhausting and sometimes are you know, we're depleted and we kind of get reactive and it's normal, that's human. But I just invite all of us to be really aware that how we're showing up as leaders is really setting the tone for the community and especially towards other committee members as well, like the other committees that are also volunteers. And so just making it safe and inviting for all of us. And we're volunteers too, by the way, to the, for the community to know that we work super hard and we're human also. So just to bring that human component into all of this. Thank you.
In order to bring our next meeting to order, we're going to take one minute from Evan and one minute from Pat. And that's going to be the end of sage advice, at least for tonight. Evan?
I'll be quick. So if I had to give sage advice, it would be to feel comfortable admitting when something doesn't work and trying something new. The first committee I served on was outreach communications and appointments, which doesn't exist anymore. We spent five months developing a process to recommend appointments to the planning board and ZBA. We tried it out. Everyone hated it, the counselors, the applicants, us as committee members. And we said, oh, that didn't work. So then we spent six months coming up with a brand-new process, tried it out, sort of worked, spent five months improving it. And every time we had to come back to the council, be like, no, this time we promise it's better. And sometimes that felt uncomfortable, but I think it's important to just be able to do that.
Great. Pat?
I will be even shorter. Please make sure you are muted unless you are intentionally speaking to the council.
Oh, thank you. I do want to mention that we hope that you will stay for the rest of the meeting if you are counselors-elect. But we are going to exit you to the audience. That will not happen in the future, starting January 3rd. And for the rest of us that are here for the meeting, we're going to continue on. We will take a brief break later. But we have a heavy agenda, so let's get going. Okay? Give Athena a moment to exit people to the audience.
Thank you all for being here and making the time.
This is just absolutely terrific. Yeah, thank you. Let me just go on and make sure I don't believe that Darcy Dumont has joined us at this point, correct? Okay. Steve Schreiber and Alyssa Brewer is, has informed me she very likely won't be able to make tonight's meeting. And Sarah Schwartz also informed me she would probably not make tonight's meeting. Okay. We've already done, can you hear and be heard? And so we're going to go on to announcements.
Sorry, I accidentally bumped Kathy out. Kathy, I'm sorry.
She'll forgive you, I think. Okay.
It wasn't personal.
Fine. So let me just look, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. That's right. Okay. Announcements, Athena? Let me just, we have one more meeting. I'm not, don't even bother to put them up. We have one more meeting on December 20th. It'll start at 6:30. And then we will do the inauguration and the first meeting of the council on January 3rd. And we're still finalizing plans. And the only other thing is that if GOL needs to meet again, which will be decided at the end of this meeting, it'll be on December 15th at 10:30. We have no hearings. We're going to move right on to general public comment. And so at this point, there are 18 people in the audience. And I'm going to ask if you would like to make general public comment, to please raise your hand. Okay, I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anybody who would like to make general public comment? This is the only general public comment this evening. Okay, seen none. I'm going to go on to the consent agenda. Hannah, do you want to put the consent agenda up? On the great. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda, you need to state that you want that item removed and that does not require a second. So I'm going to make the motion to move the following items and printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Waiver, waiver of town council rules of procedure rule 8.6 for agenda item 9A1, town manager appointments to Jones Library Building Committee. And the reason we do this is because normally it would go to TSO, but it has not gone to TSO. And then 9A1 is approval of town manager appointment to the Jones Library Building Committee. It's a very short consent agenda. Is there a second?
Hanukkah seconds.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussions or questions? Seen none. I'm going to start the vote with Shalini Bonnell.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Alyssa Brewer is absent, I'm sorry. Darcy Dumont?
He's absent.
I'm sorry?
She's absent.
She's absent, right. Okay. Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanukkah.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
And Sarah Schwartz is absent. So it's unanimous for those of us that are here, 10 in favor and three absent. We're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is resolutions, proclamations. We have none. We're moving right on to action items. As I believe you all know, we are not taking up two of the bylaws tonight. One, the one, they will be taken up on December 20th. And that is the official zoning map, map 14A, parcel 33 rezoning. And then the other one we will take up on December 20th is amendment to article 3, use regulations, section 3.325, mixed-use buildings and article 12 definitions. So we have one, one bylaw, the general bylaw that we took up last week. And it is in motion that I will put on the table, and that's to rescind general bylaw 3.15, activities and amusements in its entirety. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seen none. We'll move to a vote. Pat DeAngelis?
There's a hand, Lynn.
I'm sorry, Kathy? Lynn, I just thought it would be useful to say exactly what it is for anybody who's listening. So I'm, I'm not needing to discuss it, but I do remember the discussion, but just, we're deleting something. So just a quick it is moved to rescind general bylaw 3.15, activities and amusements is the bylaw. And it had to do with fines that were inappropriate at this time. Yeah, that's all I was saying. So people would know what we're knocking out. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so Alyssa Brewer is absent. Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Dumont is absent. Lynn Greasmer is aye. Mandy Jo Hanukkah?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam? Dorothy, you need to unmute.
It popped away, yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. And so, oh, Shalini Bonnell?
Yes.
The vote's unanimous, 10 in favor. No, 0, 0, and 3 absent. The next item on our, on our agenda is a public way request. This was reviewed in detail with TSO. And I know that Guilford was going to join us, but I think he was not planning to join us this early. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for TSO to make the report.
Yep. So I wrote a pretty extensive report on this, so I'm not going to review everything. And it, what, the one thing I want to make sure I do is thank the Transportation Advisory Committee for their work. So back in July, the town manager and Guilford Superintendent of Public Works brought forward a proposal for several permanent alterations to North Pleasant Street along Kendrick Park from Halleck Street to Triangle Street with really two goals in mind. One was to increase available parking to serve visitors of the park and especially the new playground. And the second was to improve pedestrian safety. This was then reviewed by several committees, one of which was TAC. And TAC looked at this and said, cool, we actually have a better idea on how to do this. And presented it to Guilford, who said, yeah, actually, that is sort of a better idea. TSO reviewed both options and ended up going with the TAC approach, finding that it created about the same amount of parking, but actually was better for pedestrian and cyclist safety. And so I want to make sure that I thank the Transportation Advisory Committee for once again, just a incredible amount of work and also providing really thoughtful analysis and recommendation that's well researched. The recommendation from TSO was unanimous. The recommended changes are in your report, along with several conditions we're attaching to the motion. several conditions we're attaching to the motion. I'm happy to field any questions on any of those. Yeah.
Are there questions? And I noticed that Guilford has joined us, so if we need to ask questions of him, Pat?
Just a quick question. One of the conditions is that the Disability Access Advisory Committee will be consulted, and I wonder if that's already happened or when it will happen.
So I can just start, and if Guilford wants to take over, I'm happy for him to do so. So this proposal was reviewed by the DAAC. And so they've been consulted in that regard, and they made several recommendations. But the one that we were especially focused on is they had made recommendations specifically on the number and the location of the accessible spaces. And and as I said in the report, TSO didn't necessarily feel qualified to say whether those were the right number or the right location, but wanted to ensure that as the program moved forward, DAAC would continue to be consulted with regard to those two. So they they've already reviewed this, but wanted to build an extra consultation with the committee as it moves forward.
So when will that happen?
Guilford?
Guilford, you're not
Guilford, we can't hear you.
Good?
Yes.
Every time. So more than likely, as we progress the plans along, we don't really know where we want to put the handicap spaces or any of that stuff. So when we get a little more detail where we want to put things, we'll probably present it to them and ask them if that's more in line with what they're thinking. We also have to go through and figure out how we're going to determine the number of spaces we need based on the town zoning and so forth, because it's a park versus we're trying to accommodate the park versus the roadway. So there's a couple more things we need to do, and then we'll have plans. We can show them.
I just want to pause for a moment to point out two things, and this is really in part because of our orientation tonight. Evan particularly mentioned the role of another committee of the town and the important role that they played, and in this case, obviously a very important role, because they made some other suggestions. And then I want to point out that the role Pat played, because she is in fact liaison to the DAAC. And so she raised that question in her role as liaison. Kathy, you have a question?
Yeah, it's, let me just
Sure, done, yep.
Okay, it's about two parts. The I raised this when I first saw it, the traffic flowing one way north. So if it goes north and it comes up to the message, the route to UMass, it must make a left-hand turn into traffic. So I want to know why north and why not south? That's question number one. And related to that, bikes, which is the following conditions, that bikes will go south, that will have some kind of southbound lane. Can bicycles go north and south is my question on it? And will it be, I saw a letter to the editor today, I think in the Gazette in Northampton, suggesting that if there weren't bike lanes on the main streets of Northampton, but some side streets, so you could get really near to downtown and then you could get off your bike and walk, we'd have less bicycle accidents. So I just wondering, will we really try to make sure that bikes have a two-way so they don't have to go down to the traffic circle and compete that they'll have an easy way up and down? So it's the flow of traffic, car traffic and the bike lane, those two parts. Questions?
Evan or Guilford?
So I can, I can speak to the recommendation. So, because TSO did consider all of that, so the one way, so the one way, if we want to add any parking, it has to go one way. And so the question of one-way northbound versus southbound, I thought I addressed that in the report, but basically we took the recommendation from the Transportation Advisory Committee that if you do one-way southbound, it encourages cut-through for folks who want to skip the rotary going through downtown, especially for trucks. And they felt like we don't want to send trucks down that street because it is a street that services a playground. That's less likely to happen going northbound. And so that came from the recommendation from TAC that northbound was just safer because it prohibited southbound cut-throughs from people coming down North Pleasant and trying to avoid the roundabout. As far as the bike lane part goes, the recommendation, again, this is heavily based on the TAC report and conversation with TAC Chair Tracy Zafian was that because it will be a one-way street, because it won't have too much heavy traffic flow, northbound bicyclists can just drive, can just ride in the street as they normally would. But that they wanted to provide the possibility that even though it would be one-way for vehicular traffic, bicycles could use it southbound, but there was concern that southbound counterflow on the road by bicycles outside of a designated bike lane could be dangerous, which is why the recommendation was for a southbound counterflow bike lane for that one reason, whereas northbound bicyclists could just ride in the street. I don't know if Guilford wants to build on any of that, but those were the two, those were the basis of the recommendation from TSO.
Guilford, do you have anything else you want to add?
The only other thing to add is that if you're leaving North Pleasant Street and you need to make a left towards campus on Triangle or North Pleasant, and traffic's heavy, you can always make a right, go through the roundabout and do a 360, I guess. And then head back to the north, and that's easier than trying to go south on North Pleasant and then trying to make the changes at a stop intersection as a stop sign, two stop signs, and then having against traffic for a left turn again. So we kind of laid it out that way as well. The roundabout kind of helps you change in directions if you're going north and if traffic is heavy.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Could you put a no left-hand turn the way, you know, when we come out of the North Common Parking Lot by the Town Hall, you can't go left, you can go right, so that you're not cutting wood? Would, I'm mainly worried about the times of day where there is heavy traffic. So I don't know how many people use it going north, so would that be a possibility once we see what happens?
We could do that, we could do that at a later time, or we could do it in the design. One of the things, if we do do that, I would recommend doing it only during certain times of the day. Having it in the morning or having it in the afternoon, that these, that left turns are restricted during those time periods only, because there's there's a lot of times where making a left turn will be completely safe coming out of there, because traffic is much less.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I would also just say, and I don't have it in front of me, I was trying to pull it up quickly, but TAC did discuss whether or not to recommend a no-left-turn sign at that intersection. And they opted not to recommend that, but I don't have their reasoning in front of me, but it is in their report.
Okay. Are there other questions? I'm going to go ahead and make the motion as to approve the following changes to parking and permanent, permanent changes to the public way on North Pleasant Street from Halleck Street to Triangle Street. Conversion of traffic flow to one-way northbound, north, one-way traffic northbound from McCollum Street to Triangle Street. Creation of back-in angled parking spaces on the eastern side of North Pleasant Street. Parking prohibited as a tow zone on the western side of North Pleasant Street. Removal of the grasp belt on the western side with the following conditions, complete streets approach to applied a complete streets approach is applied to the final design to maximize bicycle and pedestrian safety and use, including considerations of a separate southbound lane for cyclists either at street or sidewalk level. DAAC will be consulted on the number and placement of accessible spaces. The town will return to the town council for approval of parking regulations of new spaces, including a public hearing on the mix of metered and permit parking and metered regulations. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Darcy Demont is absent, Lynn Griesmer is aye, Mandy Jo Hanukkah.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent, Shalini Baumel.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer is absent, Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
It's unanimous, 10, 0, 0, and 3 absent. The next two items are both regarding the reorganization of Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion and the establishment of the Community Responder and Equity for Equity, Safety and Service, the CREST program. So I'm going to make a motion, look for a second, and see if there are then questions. In accordance with Charter Section 6.1, to approve the Town Manager's Reorganization Plan, creating the Community Responders for Equity, Safety and Service. Is there a second? Okay, is there any other comment or question? Mandy Jo?
Yes, thank you. I want to use my time to acknowledge a few things. I want to thank the residents for asking the council to rethink what community safety means. I want to thank the Community Safety Working Group for doing the massive amount of work on rethinking what community safety is, the proposal, making the proposal for this program, and for continuing afterwards to make it happen. Thank you to the manager for listening and for proposing an agency to work in concert with our other two public safety departments. Thank you to our fire and EMS department for being a part of the discussion and for providing medical assistance both now and in the future to those in need. And thank you to the Amherst Police Department for being willing to work with the community on such a significant matter that may have long-term effects on their own positions in town. In the past 18 months of this work, I know I haven't acknowledged the APD's work enough. I appreciate the hard work they've done, not only throughout the pandemic, but before too, to ensure that our community is safe. Their jobs have changed over time to encompass more than a police department should be responsible for. They've been asked to do far more than enforce laws. They've been asked to be social workers, mental health care providers, community liaisons, and so much more. And they've stepped up to the challenge, being trained for all of these additional roles and responding to these calls with professionalism. I see the creation of this agency as a way to correct a path that was taken. We should have never put the burden of being social workers and mental health care providers on the APD. The CREST agency will permit us to provide these services even better. And I want to thank APD for their work and their cooperation and look forward to seeing the three branches, assuming this passes, of our community, of our public safety department, work closely with each other for the betterment of the entire town. Thanks.
Can we second a statement? Thank you, Mandy Jo. That was very, very well stated, and I want to thank you for taking the time to put it together so eloquently. Evan?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't want to follow that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mandy. I just wanted to give the TSO report.
Yeah.
Which was that TSO reviewed this at its December 9th meeting after holding a required public forum and recommended unanimously that the town council approved the Town Manager's Reorganization Plan to create CREST. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that recommendation. Those specific questions about the program should be directed to Paul.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, then I'm going to bring it to a vote. And I get to vote, yes. Thank you. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan? Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber? Steve Schreiber? You need to unmute, Steve. Steve? I think you're unmuted.
You're unmuted. Can you say something out loud so we can?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So how do you vote on this, Steve?
Aye.
Thank you. Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent, Shalini Baumel?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer is absent, Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
And Darcy Demont is absent. It is unanimous for all of us that are here, 10, 0, 0, 3 absent. The second one is to, in accordance with Charter Section 6.1, to approve the Town Manager's Reorganization Plan, creating the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you. And Evan, would you like to give the TSO report?
TSO considered this also at its December 9th meeting, following the required public forum, and voted unanimously to recommend the town council approve the Town Manager's Reorganization Plan, creating the DEI.
Great. Are there any questions or comments? Then we're going to take this to a vote. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Sarah Schwartz is absent, Shalini Baumel?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer is absent, Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont is absent, Griesmer is present, and it is unanimous. And, oh, I'm sorry, aye, it is unanimous, 10, 0, 0, 3. We are going to take a brief five-minute break and come back after that. We're trying to reconnect with Shalini. She has evidently lost connection. Athena, any success?
I haven't heard back yet.
All right, I think we're going to continue on, given the circumstances, okay? The FY23 Town Council Budget Policy Guidelines has been moved to December 20th. It should have been there all along. My apologies for putting it on the wrong agenda. We are going to go on to the Town Council Performance Goals for the Town Manager. And we're going to do that like we did last week, where we have it up on the screen and we go section by section. We're going to start with the policy goals. And before I do that, however, George, did you have a brief statement on behalf of GOL?
I think no, Lynn. We did meet and we did make well, the revisions that you see in the packet tonight are the result of that meeting. Paul was present. We had a very good conversation with him. I had two minor changes that I'll make perhaps later this evening as we go through the document when we reached out to Kathy and Steve in regards to the Elementary School Building Committee, Building Committee, and also reached out to Andy and FinCom. But documentation is the result of GOL's deliberation and Paul's presence at that meeting.
So the document we're going to actually show on the screen is the one that's been in your packet since last week. And it is the one that GOL voted on. So Athena, could we put the document up? And while she's doing that, if you look at your own copy, are there any comments, questions, or proposed changes to the opening three paragraphs before you get to the goals? Athena, are you able to put this up on the screen?
I'm working on it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I know you're trying to do, Athena, by the way, is both the minute taker and the IT person tonight, which is a little unfair, but it's what we have.
I'm afraid the version that I'm finding is the one that's edited, so I'm just trying to clean it up.
Well, it will be the one that was edited, but it'll be the one that was in the council's packet since last week. Okay. Uh, yes, that's, I believe, the one we won. All right. Is there any comment in the first paragraph? First three paragraphs. Seeing none. We're going to move on to climate action. There was a change made there, uh, based on recommendations of the last meeting. Are there any comments on it? Could you please scroll up so climate action is? There we go. Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so let's try to put community health and safety in its full presence on the screen. It's there. Uh, there's one area where the vote of the council, um, has to be added in. There were a few edits. Are there any other comments or changes? Mandy Jo?
I was just going to say we need to add December, the, the number thirteen to December thirteen, because we just voted that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, then we're moving on to economic vitality. And are there any questions here? Mandy Jo?
So number five, um, this one has the creating a dedicated funding source. It's kind of already been done. Um, this was left in because we were wondering whether FinCom had ever recommended something different. I think the answer is they hadn't finished. There was a rec, there was a referral at some point to Finance Committee, um, about a subset of dedication of the Transportation Fund. It's not there. And so I was curious whether we should just delete that and then add the word "and" before number four.
That was, in fact, by, um, edit after speaking with Andy. Um, and Andy can, of course, weigh in here as well. But I did check with him, and, um, this is, there's not been any action, um, on FinCom's part related to this. Um, and Paul's, uh, comment was that the Transportation Enterprise Fund, if that's the right term, is currently the dedicated funding source. So the recommendation, uh, is to delete and to put the "and" um, in front of four.
So "and" would go in front of four, and we would delete everything after "friendly"?
That is correct with a period.
Okay. Are there any other comments on that or questions? Kathy, did you need to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll say on this. Um, I just, just, I'm oka, I think I'm okay with the change. The question is that we started to have a discussion about things that would create a funding source to help fund parking. Um, and does this, um, by deleting this, does that say when? We started that conversation in finance, and we were asked to wait because Sean is working on, uh, revising parking fees, some of the parking policies that are related with fees. Um, so it's a, that's, it's kind of a question. If we delete that, does it delete that we're interested in that? Um, am I opening up a bigger topic, in which case I don't want to? So I'm, we could put a period on it, and we could come back with something from finance.
It is my understanding, and the Town Manager should weigh in, that he is ready to bring that report forward to the next council, um, regarding fees, et cetera. Um, I don't see that this changes anything with that. George, comments?
Yeah, I, the thought is this document is instructing the Town Manager on what we want him to do. At the moment, it seems to be something that FinCom is still mulling over. Um, and so this particular statement, at least, um, seems not to be appropriate, since it's already been done. Um, and it's really in our court. Um, and Paul's also stated that he's looking, he's doing some things at his end, unless we wanted to just tell him to continue doing it, but I think that's silly, so I don't see any point for five.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with it then.
Okay. Um, then we're moving on to the, the four capital projects for major capital investments, excuse me. Are there any comments here? George?
Um, I'm just looking. We have, um, I want to make sure the change is there. Um, one should read, I'm just trying to read two documents at once here. One should read now, meeting town and MSBA milestones and deadlines. That was the, uh, recommendation of Steve and Kathy, and so one should be, um, simply state, meeting town and MSBA, uh, milestones and deadlines, comma, and that's it. And the rest is deleted. And thank you to Steve and Kathy for getting back to me. Um, but that was their recommendation.
Okay, I don't see any problem with that. Are there other comments regarding it?
No, that's it.
Uh, so can, George, just, so everything else gets deleted then? Because I don't have to worry, because they haven't really given us a grant award, so that's fine then, that change. Great. Thank you.
Okay. George, you still have your hand up. Anything else?
Sorry. Down goes.
Uh, housing affordability. Are there any other comments there? Racial equity and social justice. Are there any comments there? Okay, now we're going on to the newer part, uh, under management goals. The first one is administration, leadership, and personnel. Comments or questions? Okay, then we're going on to finance. Any questions there? Seeing none. We're going on to long-term vision. Any questions there? We're going on to five, community engagement. Any questions there? I'm sorry, that was four. Five is relationship with the Town Council. Any questions there? And six is a new one, basically splitting off from four, and that is relationship with the University of Massachusetts, Amherst College, and Hampshire College. Are there any questions there? I'm going to make a motion, and that's to adopt the Town Council's performance goals for the Town Manager, January one, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, as amended.
Ryan, second.
Is there any further discussion or question? Uh, then I'm going to begin the vote with Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz is absent. Shalene Baumill is absent. Alyssa Brewer is absent. Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont is absent. Lynn Griesmer is an "I." Mandy Jo Hanicky?
Aye.
It is unanimous, nine, zero, zero, four. And GOL, you don't have to meet again. Thank you for the really serious work that you did on these and for working with Paul to bring them forward. Okay? Um, let me just shuffle papers here. Um, each of you have talked a little bit in our orientation meeting regarding your various, um, memos, transition memos, and so forth. So I'm going to ask whether there's additional things you'd like to talk about now, but I want to just state extremely clearly, okay? If a counselor wants us to vote not to carry something forward to the next council, I need to know that by noon on Tuesday. That's noon this Tuesday. Okay? You can bring it up tonight. You can email Athena me and Paul anytime, but noon on Tuesday is the deadline. We're not going to be sitting here on the twentieth, adding things to that vote. Okay? Uh, so, given that, is there anything else on the community resources? Mandy Jo, you've already given a brief thing. Most of us were here, but maybe you'd like to say a few more words.
Um, yes, I would. Um, the memo speaks for itself in some sense, but I do want to spend some time thanking the committee members of the Community Resources Committee, um, for all their hard work. Um, not just since I've been on the committee. I haven't served on it the entire time, but, but since it was formed, um, it's had, uh, multiple chairs. Um, it's had many, many ref referrals. Um, we've gotten through nearly all of them. There are only three left, um, one of which came to us after the election. Um, and so I just want to thank everyone that served on the Community Resources Committee for the great effort they put into learning some very hard material, because zoning is not, um, easy to learn. The master plan is hundreds of pages long. Um, working on a comprehensive housing policy from scratch is something, um, that took a lot of effort. And then I also want to thank the entire Planning Department, um, because they, they worked very hard to accommodate a council who, about a year ago, um, set forth some zoning priorities for return to the council in three months and in six months, I believe it was, um, that I, I think this entire council has learned was too ambitious. Um, and so, but, but they, they, they put a lot of work into all of that. They looked at them, they thought and said, here's things we can do with them and, and get through. And they answered questions. They did research. When there were questions that came up, they created, um, three-D renderings to do some visualizations. And, and so I can't thank the department enough, and I also can't thank the Planning Board enough for, um, also working to meet some stuff that we as a council, the first council, had a learning curve on, um, regarding those zoning priorities and how much any one zoning change, how much work goes into one zoning change, let alone, I think there were like twelve things on the list or nine things on the list. Um, so, so that, that's what I will spend my time doing, is just thanking people.
Great. Are there any questions with regard to the CRC Transition Report? Yes, Kathy?
Um, Lynn, um, I'm just trying to understand the first statement you made on speak by tomorrow afternoon or forever hold your peace. Um, so, um, or is this? If you don't want something carried over?
Yes.
Me, does it mean you want action on it now, or do you mean this, everything starts over again?
If you do not want something carried over, it means that next week, we will have a menu of those items. And we will vote them one by one, and if a majority of the council does not want them carried over, they will not carry over to the next council as a referral or as part of the transition. This is the section of the charter that speaks to this. Let me just also mention, not everything dies. In fact, it's all stays alive. And in fact, a new council can actually bring it back if they want to. Mandy Jo, you were on the Charter Commission and part of creating this one.
Yeah, no, I, I would just say that if there is a formal referral, that something's sitting in a committee, that's, that's the first part of, say, my transition memo. The item's automatically carried over because there's a formal referral. If that is voted, if that is brought up at, say, next week, um, I'll, I'll take, for example, if someone wants to to ask the council not to continue the referral on the comprehensive housing policy to the Town Manager and CRC for implementation, and the council votes in the affirmative to not continue that referral, that's the same as essentially removing it from the committee's jurisdiction, and therefore it would have to start completely over with a new referral or something. So if that is a zoning thing that is done, that means any new proposal would have, the, the clock would start again. If a public hearing had been held, it would be unhe, essentially, you'd have to hold another one no matter what, because it would be a new referral.
Okay. Kathy, does that help clarify?
I think, I think so. You know, I'm, I'm not trying to add to next week's meeting, um, but I'm just trying to understand what any, um, okay, thank you. I won't ask anymore. I'm just, I will digest everything I just heard.
Okay. Thank you. Um, then, uh, Finance Committee is not in this packet, and to be honest, there's really, I mean, Andy and I have talked about the Finance Committee Transition Memo, but there's not much the council can do to take something off of the Finance Committee's agenda. It's kind of all in the charter and required to be done, but it will be in next week's packet. Um, uh, GOL, uh, George, any, any additional comments you would like to make?
Yeah, too quickly, Lynn, tonight's actions, as Paul pointed out in his presentation to, at the public forum, have some bylaw implications. Um, and I, this is just a question we don't have to answer tonight, or maybe there's an obvious quick answer, and that, that's it. Is there anything that, I hate to say this, but it's anything that Joe, well, I'm used to do, um, in terms going forward? Um, for, no, okay? That's what an answer I like to hear. Thank you. Uh, secondly, to my, to my colleagues, um, in addition to the transition memo, there will be a motion, uh, on the, uh, agenda next week. Um, we're going to be requesting, a request for information from Paul on a series of bylaws, um, that we were working on for future considerations, so don't, don't freak out. Um, but, uh, we're basically sending a number of bylaws to him and asking him to give us some information, i.e. the council. And we're going to give him, I think, something like six months, but, uh, so it'll be a transition memo, and there'll be a separate motion, um, related to some of the bylaws for future consideration.
Thank you. And, and also, because of this bylaw, uh, set of bylaws that were originally referred with the general bylaw review, uh, GOL has all just, also listed those that they do not feel need any further review, and they, they will automatically be removed from that list. Okay? Um, and TSO, Evan?
Yeah, I don't think there's much I need to add. I, I did just want to point out that there's one item on there that was technically a referral to CRC prior to the existence of TSO, um, that CRC transmitted to TSO. Um, TSO never talked about it. Because it wasn't directly referred to TSO, I did not consider it to be an item automatically referred, um, under Section, yeah, Rules and Procedures, Section eight point nine. Um, and the committee, I assume, agreed with me, because this did go through, um, two meetings of committee review, this carryover report. Um, but if people feel otherwise, then I'm, I'm having to entertain that. Um, otherwise, I think that the memo speaks for itself.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? I, I want to just thank all of the committees. I mean, you've really done an amazing and thoughtful job. And these memos set a precedent for future councils about how you transition from one council to the next and how you communicate your business. Um, so we're kind of, this is a part of building that plane while we're still flying it. Um, and this is one of the final things we have to do. So, uh, thank you. There'll be no action on this tonight. The next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's contract terms. This is attached to your motions. It's done as an amendment. It was created by the, uh, Town Attorney. Uh, and it, um, reflects the vote of the council in executive session last week. We will now take the time to vote that publicly now. And so I'm going to put the motion on the floor and that's to approve the amendment to employment agreement between Town of Amherst, Massachusetts and Paul Bachmann, as shown on page five of the motion sheet. And to authorize the town council president to sign said document on behalf of the town council. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mandy Jo.
Sir, I don't have a question about this contract term, but before we voted it, evaluation memo, do we need to vote that too? Because I'm, maybe I have an old motion sheet. So is that a second motion coming up?
Yeah, we voted it last week. We voted it as amended last week. And I want, and Mandy Jo, I think, thank you for bringing up. I then proceeded to send the town clerk the wrong documents. Actually, on the seventh, I made the final changes and then sent her the wrong ones. So when you picked that up this morning, we rapidly put the correct ones in, but we voted that last week. Okay? Are there any questions on this man, town manager's contract?
Lynn, before we move on, excuse me, Councilor Pam looks like she disconnected and reconnected. Just want to make sure she can hear us. Okay, thanks, Dorothy.
I was just, I was double checking that my Surface Town Computer cannot handle video before I sent you a note. That's what I was doing.
Okay.
Own computer.
Thank you, Dorothy. Okay. And Shalini, by the way, has informed me that she disconnected because of personal reasons. Okay? So the motion's been made. Did I get, I had a second, right, from Pat DeAngelis?
Yes, you did.
Is there any further question or comment? Seeing none, then we're going to move to a vote and we're starting with Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane. Kathy, you need to unmute.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Steve, Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Shalini Baumil is absent. Alyssa Brewer is absent. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont's absent. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
I'm sorry, and Sarah Schwartz is absent. So it is eight in favor, none opposed, one abstention and four absent. Okay. We've done the town manager's appointment to the Jones Library. Are there any committee and liaison reports? Mandy Jo.
You're, you're going to get sick of hearing me say this, but January 10th at 6:45 is the next Community Resources Committee meeting. The hearing on the proposal for an Article 16 temporary moratorium will begin at 7:00 PM. And in consultation with the current council president, Griesmer and our clerk, we will be noticing that via a virtual meeting only. So that will start showing up soon and will be published in the paper in about two weeks will be the first notification in the paper, but that's when it is.
Thank you. Kathy, Elementary School Building Committee, you have a joint committee with the school committee.
To, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, it's a Google Meets. It's, it's listed so you can go on. There should also, it may be posted tonight, but it definitely will be posted in the morning. The Dinesco presentation, which is quite nice in terms of their part of the meeting. They'll be speaking for 20 to 30 minutes and then a back and forth. So they're laying out what to expect going into the year and the major milestones. And their team, a core team, will all be on. So you'll be able to see who something called Dinesco is. Yeah, I just add, Steve and I drove out, out to Lexington today and saw a school that they built. It's a Net Zero School, an elementary school, same grade span. And it was quite terrific in a lot of different ways. So it, it, I think we have a really good team. I mean, I always thought we had a good team, but now I really think we have a good team.
Great. Thank you. Andy, Finance Committee, no more meetings?
Yes, seeing for Finance Committee.
Report. Do you have any report?
I don't have a report. We, we, a lot of the last meeting was reported through TSO and I thank Kathy for having done the hard work on putting together a very complicated topic in very good fashion, of course. And we are working on the budget guideline document for next week's meeting and that, how much else to report?
And the transition memo.
Yeah, we're working on a brief transition memo because as is indicated, the Finance Committee is really driven by the budget process which comes out of the Charter and state law. And we want to memorialize it for the new council to understand a little bit of what it's about. But we don't have signal, we don't have the kinds of ongoing things that some of the other committees have going on.
Okay. GOL, George, anything else? Okay, TSO?
No further report from TSO. We have finished our business for this term.
Thank you. Any liaison reports?
Just for, for CPAC, if anyone wants to see the final votes, they did take them on. But we will also be seeing them as in council when it comes as a packet to us. I think there's, there's one that's been postponed a bit for more discussion. And that's the Community Fields in the Track. But it's, it's a quite, I thought a quite varied and interesting list of projects that they'll be bringing forward to us this year.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? We've approved minutes. Did we approve that?
No, we didn't have minutes ready.
We don't have minutes ready. Right, thank you. Town manager, any questions? Paul?
Yeah, just two things. First, I want to thank the council for your vote earlier tonight. It's a real honor to serve the town and to work with great people on the staff and with the council. And just how much I love working here and doing the work. So thank you very much for that. And then a piece of good news, that was good news, I guess, for me. It is that the, we, the governor announced this morning that the town will be one of the communities receiving at-home testing kits. We will receive about seven, just under 7,500 kits that the town will distribute. The goal of this is to distribute them to families who are facing financial hardship, directed towards families below the poverty level. And to create additional access for folks. These are the rapid tests where in 15 minutes you get a, the test results. And it's the ideas, like especially for family gatherings and stuff, we can put it in the hands of people who are needed, who need it. So they will know what their status is in terms of COVID-19. It's available for anybody two years old and up, two years old and up. So it can be the entire family. Well, you know, the health, we learned about this this morning, that the health director is working on a, on how we will distribute them. Clearly, we will want to work with the school district because they have immediate access to most of the families that are in need. It really is directed towards families in anticipation of the holidays. So that's good news. We'll have more for that coming out.
Are there any other questions or comments for the town manager? Paul, I don't think we've said it publicly, but in our executive session, we also commended you for the contributions that you've made to the town. And so we want to continue to thank you and for your leadership. And we are glad that you have agreed for the, for the extension as well.
Thank you.
Are there, yes, Dorothy?
Well, on the topic of COVID, it's coming closer and I know more people who are affected now than I have at any time during this whole epidemic. So I'm just wondering if it's time to rethink or at least have a second plan for the January 3rd meeting in terms of the in-person meeting. I'm, I'm sure you're going to be on it, but I'm just saying that some people I know are starting to get scared for the first time, you know, so.
Paul and Athena and I just discussed that today. The option remains for people to attend any meeting virtually. And any councilor to attend any meeting virtually. And we'll be coming forth with a next plan, if you will. Okay? Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any other councilor comments? Don't everybody cheer at once. The meeting is adjourned and it's 8:40.
Bye, y'all.
You, thank you.